in and begin to take your seats. We're going to get started in just a minute. For those of you who may not have been here last evening, we're going to start out on Article 43. And where we are on Article 43 is we have a motion on the floor to accept and adopt that article. And that's where we'll pick up when we get going in just a minute. Article 43. Just looking for the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Chori. There he is. While we're waiting for him to come up, tonight's voter card is blue. So if you're in the hall and you're looking to participate, you need to have a blue voter card. If you don't have one, you've got to go out to the registrars and get one now in order to be able to participate. The non-voting section again is the bleacher section immediately to my right. So anyone who does not have a card, is not a voter, I'd ask you to move to that portion of the hall, the bleacher section immediately to my right. Okay, so we're on Article 43, which is a proposed amendment to the Howich Wetlands Protection Bylaw. We had a main motion on the floor, which was to accept and adopt the bylaw as printed. There was debate. There were a couple of voters who indicated that they wished to make amendments. One of those voters has approached me and I will be looking to recognize him this evening on an amendment. But first, I've also been contacted by the Conservation Commission, and they would like to make an amendment to their main motion, which was to accept and adopt as printed. They apparently have some changes to the bylaw. They want to get to you folks, some corrections now. So with that, is there somebody from the Conservation Commission who's looking to make a proposed amendment?
Thank you very much. We're having a sidebar over here with counsel.
Okay.
Are we good? We're good. I'm Ernest Craftery. I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Would like to just clarify a couple of points that are in the warrant article currently. On page 40, the, toward the bottom, there's a paragraph that starts off "and further." Delete paragraph D in its entirety and replace it with the following. Would like to strike out "and further" and replace that with "within 310.4." All right? And then paragraph D-
So I think it's 310 dash four.
Dash four, thank you. And then under paragraph D, the following paragraph at the end of page 40, we're taking that out entirely and adding that as the third paragraph on page 41. So that paragraph D becomes under 310 dash four. And the final change is to delete in its entirety the third paragraph on page 41, which states "and further," in paragraph D, add the phrase "this bylaw and associated wetland protection regulations after may grant a conservation variance from the requirements of and amid the phrase the 50-foot no disturb zone." Those are the only changes we're making at this point, or proposing at this point for it.
So you have some written motion somebody's going to bring up to me shortly, hopefully? And is there a second out there to this proposed amendment? Okay. Thanks. All right, so we have a motion in the nature of an amendment to the main motion. Main motion was simply accept and adopt as printed. The motion that's been offered now is to accept and adopt as printed with the following change. And that change, as I followed it, as they described it, on page 40, at the bottom, that paragraph D that involves the variance provision, they want to introduce that rather than say "and further," they want to say "within 310.4" to put it in the right spot. But they're not changing it. Same variance paragraph is going in. And then on the next page, they had a reference to changing the old variance paragraph, which they want to simply strike so there's no conflict between the two variance paragraphs. So they're simply taking the variance paragraph on page 39, they're putting it under 310.4 as opposed to 310.3, and then they're getting rid of the reference to paragraph D again on that second page because otherwise it would conflict. So that's the change in the amendment. So first, before I call on somebody else for an amendment, is there any debate on this proposed amendment that's been offered by the commission, on this amendment? Yes, ma'am?
Karen Horn, West Harwich. I don't have a problem with the substance. I have a serious problem with the fact that you had an entire day to type this up for us to look at, and we're expected here to just quickly flip pages and understand what it is you're changing and asking us to vote on. And I just feel like that's irresponsible and honestly not fair to us who are here in the best interests of our town.
Appreciate your observation. Amendments are a fact of life before legislative bodies. These things happen. That's why we're here. And so I'll do my best to describe it again. If anybody didn't understand it, given the last comment, let me just walk through it one more time. Okay, Mr. Howell has a point of information on the amendment.
Ernie, was there a posted meeting for this change to have occurred, for you to offer the amendment? Or are you offering it as the Conservation Commission?
We were advised by council that there was this-
That's not the question. Did you have a posted meeting? Were you voting on the-
No.
Thank you.
Any further debate on the proposed amendment? Mr. Kakounis?
I'd like to know, is this motion being made by an individual at a town meeting floor, or is this motion being made by the Conservation Commission?
I've accepted it from the individual, who is the Chairman of the Commission.
Thank you.
Any further debate on the amendment? Looks like you're ready to vote on the amendment. Again, it's a correction. It's moving paragraph D from one section to the other. It's the variance paragraph on the bottom of page 40, and then striking out the additional reference to paragraph D on page 41. All those in favor of the amendment as proposed, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
The amendment carries. So we now have a main motion to accept and adopt the bylaw as printed with the one change that we just voted. So now, in further debate, I have a gentleman who was up last night, and he has a further motion to amend. Your name again, sir. I'm sorry, I forgot it.
Dennis Murphy, Long Pond Drive.
Mr. Murphy.
I move the motion be amended by adding the following. The amendment to the Wetlands Protection Bylaw 310 shall not apply to all lots improved and unimproved which currently exist. And-
Do I hear a second? Okay, that motion has been made and seconded. Can you bring that forward for me so I've got the written copy? Okay, so Mr. Murphy's motion is as follows, that the main motion that we just amended to move around section D proposes to add this language. "The amendments to the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, Chapter 310, shall not apply to all lots improved and unimproved which currently exist." So that's his amendment, and I'll now recognize him for the purpose of debate. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. My reason for this is that I have a piece of property, which I purchased 23 years ago, which I was planning on building a house on one level without stairs, because the time's coming. Sooner rather than later, the knees are going. And so I bought this property, and I've been paying taxes on it for 23 years with the idea that I could build the house that I wanted within the parameters of the conservation regulations at the time. And now we're being changed, they're proposing changes now midstream, heck, near the finish line. And so what I'm looking for is your assistance in changing this so that it does not happen to people such as myself who presently have properties in existence and plan on making changes to them. Thank you.
Any further debate on the proposed amendment to the main motion? Yes, sir?
Ernest Craftery, again. I guess my sense is, is that your amendment change is overly broad. We have a number of different situations where we have applicants come before us wanting to improve properties, and it would result in damage to certain protected resource areas. We can grant variances, mind you. So depending on circumstances, we've done that in the past. However, you know, I guess I'll condition this by saying that, you know, a wise person once told me too, that, you know, all the land that we own, we're simply stewards of that land. And it's our responsibility to protect that for future generations. And it's so easy to grant variances, which result in the natural resources that we have in this town getting impaired and destroyed. So that's our role here. That's what we're looking to protect. And, you know, again, I think that the proposal you've made is just overly broad as it's currently presented.
Mr. Murphy?
Sir, I was, it was suggested by council that this be the way it be presented. And I too have been a, I think, a good steward of my property, which abuts wetlands. I'm very conscious of the wetlands. I care about them. But I also care about my well-being and the well-being of my family.
Further debate, Mr. Kakounis, on the amendment. We're debating the proposed amendment that this amendment we're considering tonight shall not apply to all lots that currently exist.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize to you, sir, and the audience here tonight. I left rather early last night. Could you, first of all, just, and this pertains to the amendment, but the town presently has this Howich Wetlands Protectin' Bylaw in place, and the original motion is only to change the things that are either in bold print, or as you made in the amendment that has been approved, been either removed or changed this evening. Am I correct in assuming that?
No, you're not correct with respect to this one. There are some bylaws in the warrant where there was bold print or underlined to give you an indication of what was being changed. But in this particular proposal, all of this is changes.
Okay, so this is all brand new. We do not have this-
This is all, this is all changes to the Wetlands Bylaw.
Okay.
So not just the bold. For example, under 310.2, all these definitions are new. They're added to the current definitions that are in the bylaw under 310.
Excellent. Thank you for that explanation. On the amendment, then, the gentleman did say he spoke to council, so my question was going to be, is it in fact legal through the Conservation Commission's laws and abilities to automatically exempt pre-existing lots and pre-existing dwellings or properties, as the man explains, with a Wetlands Bylaw? I was under the impression that's what a variance was for. So I just want to make sure that if this does pass, it is in fact legal language. That's acceptable.
I'll ask Town Council Amy Quesswell to respond to that.
I'm not a resident. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Amy Quessell, Town Council. Through you, Mr. Moderator. The amendment as written appears to, appears to exempt any, any change that's going to happen tonight, any amendment that will happen tonight to the Wetland Bylaw, and possibly any future amendment to the Wetland Bylaw. And under, it is a general bylaw. There's generally, there's no grandfathering within a general, in the general bylaw, as opposed to a zoning bylaw where there is. I'm not sure that the amendment that the gentleman proposed is what he intended. It was my, it was my understanding that he intended to exempt any zoning, or any, I'm sorry, any amendment that happened tonight. But that's not what was read. So, and with regard to whether it's legal or not, again, general bylaws are not supposed to have grandfathering provisions in them. There's nothing that says that they cannot. And again, the Attorney General will review this, and I can't say what the Attorney General will do.
Any further debate on the proposed amendment? Yes, sir?
John Sakis from Howich Center. Just on the amendment, it sounds good in practice, but it almost is I have mine and the next guy can't get his kind of thing. So I don't know. I don't think we should amend it that way.
Any further debate on the amendment? Yes, sir?
Yes. I agree that the amendment that was just offered should be denied. And I'll give an example. In my neighborhood, I go around Harry Dunn Circle. I do laps on my bike. There is a vernal pond in that area that the Conservation Commission is trying to protect. And I'd like to see that continue on to perpetuity. If we accept that amendment, my neighbors would be able, instead of having their boat in their driveway, they may be able to build a shed or a boat garage that is in proximity to where I hear peavers as I do my laps. That's, that's taking it close to home. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment? Looks like you're ready for a vote. So what we're voting on is just the proposed amendment. The amendment seeks to add language to the main motion to the effect that the amendment shall not apply to all lots improved and unimproved which currently exist. All those in favor of the amendment as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
The amendment does not carry. So now we're back to the main motion as amended, which is accept and adopt, and then the correction as offered by the individual member of the Conservation Commission. Further debate on that motion? Mr. Sakis?
Could I ask, do I still have five minutes or four minutes left tonight, or did I use my time last night?
No, you have time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Can we speak to this entire amendment from the beginning, rather than just what I focused on last night? Is that what we're here discussing?
That's what the amendment is currently before the meeting. The entire bylaw is before the meeting at this moment.
So it begins on page 39, and they're asking for changes to definitions, and they want to delete some of the language, and they also want to add new language. And some of this language is pretty good, but some of it seems a little strange, like mitigation. I always thought mitigation was the action of reducing the severity or the painfulness or something. And it looks like, if you read on, that one of the ways that we can reduce this pain is in lieu fees paid to the Conservation Commission, so they can use this money to mitigate on constrained sites, meaning maybe not in your site, maybe not in the site that's right there that is pertinent to their evaluation, but something maybe in East Howich, or maybe behind the dump where I live. But maybe they won't put it over in my neighborhood. Maybe that money will get spent where the people that have the money, that can afford to pay these fees to get this mitigation, because I might not be able to afford that mitigation. So again, the language here is very concerning. I think the entire amendment, yes, we need some of these changes because some paragraphs need changes. If we flip the page, I think some of these things shall fish. Yeah, we should know what they are, and we should know what a variance is. Some people would like to see us go down to 1,000 feet. I think it's a good idea on the vernal pools. Let them take charge of more of our land. But some people might not feel that way. It doesn't bother me because I have a cranberry bar. I get to vernal pool anyway. So I'm affected in one way or another. Other people, doesn't matter if they're affected. So I don't think we should, I don't know if we should change that, or if we should go to what the state does. Should we leave it at 3,000? That's kind of in the middle. I don't know. Thousand's extreme, there's 5,000 extreme. 3,000 seemed good to me. I don't know what you think. It's okay that they move paragraph D. No problem. I'm very nervous. I hope you people understand that. The next thing I take offense is, I live on an abandoned cranberry bar. It's the pain of my life. Do I call it unlawful? Because it's abandoned. It's active. It still produces fruit. I use that for Thanksgiving. But it's, it's active, but it's not lawful. It's unlawful in their laws. So, because I don't sell my fruit, I don't think that's right to have the word lawful. I think we should delete that. I can accept active and inactive, but not lawful and unlawful. Everything else looks good. I think they need to insert the word in paragraph C and paragraph 310. We need to have that rewritten. They didn't write it right in the first place. And then I also think that J K L and M is another pay and go thing, where if you can afford to be at the table, you have the money, you can do it. Everybody else, don't even come to our, don't come to our meetings. That's my feelings, just my own thoughts. One other thing, I was just wondering in the explanation, why didn't they tell us about the pay and go that's in this thing? Thank you.
Further debate on the motion? Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Moderator, it troubles me to see us sit here tonight and attempt to work out a, an important bylaw under conservation. We're not prepared to make amendments to this proposal. I think it should be held in regular meetings with legal counsel and public there, and work through, and create a bylaw that works for everybody. But for us to do it here at town meeting just doesn't cut it. And I think we should indefinitely postpone it for now and bring it back for another meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, as you know, we can't put a motion to indefinitely postpone on the floor at this point because we have a positive motion. So you get to the same place by voting no. So anybody further?
May I add one more thing, please? Just-
You get two times, you get two times speaking, so this is your second time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Ford. With what Mr. Thompson said, we had a town meeting last night, and they asked us, I think, 42 questions. They asked for money, and we- questions. They asked for money, and we said yes. Money is easy. This item 43, they're asking us to change the law. This is forever. This isn't a debt that we can pay. This is on you forever, and they're asking us. And I apologize. Leo, you eloquently pointed out to me, I should have been at the meetings all year. This took me by surprise. I read it in the newspaper in the warrant. I should have been more aware. I should have been more active. And I haven't. I apologize. There were years ago, I was active in a couple of committees. Life became complicated. I'm still here. I survived. I hope we can resolve this tonight some way, either kick it out, get it rewritten, bring it back to us, or let's suffer with it for the rest of our lives.
Any further debate? Mr. Gekonas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I too have some problems with a couple of different things. Mr. Sarcus pointed out the words "active" and "lawful" in regards to cranberry bogs. Many cranberry bogs in this town and across the Cape really are becoming not used, not productive. So I'm just curious as far as what the definitions of "active" and "lawful" actually mean. I'm sure their intent is that, as many of you people know, there are areas in this town which were cranberries' bogs back in 1940, but now have trees the size of these chairs growing in the middle of them. Obviously, they're not active. I'm not sure about lawful, but they're certainly not active. But then there are many bogs, like Mr. Sarcus's and myself's, that, you know, it just doesn't behoove us to put the time and money into growing a crop. So do I have to prove somehow? Again, I don't want to get into it, but it sounds like this might need a little bit of work, so we understand what the definitions actually mean, so we can understand better how this will impact in us. If this gets turned down this evening, I personally will be more than happy to work with the Conservation Commission. I too did not attend the meetings. I will disclose that here this evening. I wish I had, but I had not, and I'm sure I can commit Mr. Sarcus to joining me too, if this goes back out to some public input, so it can come back in front of this board as a document that's not being amended on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Further debate, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Megan McGonigal of Ryder Road. I just had a couple of questions about how many lots might be affected by this. Do we have any idea?
Amy Kozalski, our Conservation Agent. She's not a resident here, but there's no objection, I don't believe, to you addressing the meeting, Amy?
We do not have an exact number. I will say that vernal pools, regardless of their size, are protected by the state. So there was a lot of discussion about a vernal pool being smaller than the 3,000 square feet. It's still protected as a vernal pool, regardless of size. We do not have an exact number. We believe it to be very few.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a couple more questions.
Sure.
One of them is just, how long did it take to put together this change? Was this a year of meetings, or?
This has been at least two years of public hearings that we have had. And we encourage everybody to attend them. We do advertise them in the papers. We want public input from these things. And what you see in front of you is based on the input that we received.
Further debate?
So the only other comment I wanted to make is that it seems like another delay might end up with no discussion anyway, because there wouldn't be anything left. So I just would hesitate to vote it down.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Jonas Robinson, Pleasant Lake. Amy just said this would only affect very few properties. The 60-foot no-new structure zone would affect every property that abuts any wetland in Harwich. It has to be thousands, not very few.
Yes, Amy, a follow-up to that?
I am sorry. I apologize. I thought Mrs. McGonigal was only referring to the wetlands that were less than 3,000 square feet. You are correct that the 60-foot no-disturb zone would apply to any legal, regulated wetland in the town of Harwich.
Further debate, Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Brad Chase, South Harwich, member of the Conservation Commission, five terms. So we have discussed this for a long time. I think the concerns that brought us here really developed quite some time ago. And one of the concepts I'd like to talk about is just encroachment. And what we're seeing quite often is that folks, they're permitted to put a structure to the 50-foot line, and we have a 0- to 50-foot no-disturb zone, and it's called that for a good reason. You can't put new structures, or you can't have activities to disturb the 0- to 50 feet from the wetland resource area. And what I've seen a lot in my time is folks get their permit, they put their structure near the 50-foot, and they will encroach further into the 0- to 50-foot no-disturb zone. So I think what we're trying to do is reduce those impacts, reduce that potential for encroachment on this 0- to 50-foot line in the adjacent natural resources. And we've had, I think, 10 public hearings that were posted on this topic since 2019. And I share all the great comments and concerns folks have, and it's often not easy to get out during a pandemic to these hearings, but we did vet this quite a bit. And I think it's a very logical, natural approach to try to reduce some of this encroachment for our natural resources. And I urge the voters tonight to support this.
Further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. So again, the motion before you at this point is accept and adopt, and then with the change that the gentleman from the Conservation Commission offered, which is to move that paragraph D into 310-4, as opposed to 310-3, it's on page 40, and then delete the reference to paragraph D that's on page 41, the "and further" paragraph. So it's as printed, all the other changes, with that one exception. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
I think I'm going to have to take a standing count on this one. So are there people who will volunteer to be tellers this evening? Mr. McManus? Anyone else? Joan McCarty? I'm sorry, you spoke on this one, so I'll have you. I'll have you step back. Mary Ellen Lorfus? Okay. Tom Evans? I've got four, I'm sorry. Thank you. I just always swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a teller. Thank you. So we're each going to get one of these clickers. They're set on zero. Tom? I'm going to have you take this table, that bleacher section, and that bleacher section. I'm going to have you take the floor section on this side. Ed? Floor section on this side. Joan? Front table here, the back bleacher section, and then the back wall to the middle. Tom, take the back wall. Joan will meet you in the middle. Okay, so we're on Article 43. This is going to be our first standing count, actually, of this meeting. The question before you is to accept and adopt Article 43 as printed, with the one change offered by the Conservation Commission on paragraph D. All those in favor of the motion, rise and hold your voter card up, please. All in favor? Is there somebody in there? We need to check, because I've got to get that vote. It could be, could be close. Simple majority. 20? Mr. Evans? 13? Joan? Mr. McManus? 36. Yeah, on the next. Yes, yes, you can put it on this one. You can put it on this one. Are you putting yourself on there? Okay, so what was your number? What was your number? Did you add it?
Yes, no, 13 was mine.
Okay, all right. So we had two 13s, a 20, and a 36. Yeah. Okay, all those opposed to the motion, those in opposition, please rise and be counted. All those in opposition. As we asked. So we had two 13s, a 20, and a 36. Yeah, a 20 and a 36. That's 82. On my map. Carol, you counting along with us? 48. Tom? 36. Joan?
25.
Ed? 49. Those in favor of the motion, 82. Those in opposition, 158. The motion does not carry. We'll now move on to Article 44. See if the town will vote to amend the Department Revolving Funds bylaw, Section 8-1 of the Town Code. The language to be added is shown in bold, underlined text. The language to be deleted, shown as a strike-through, and to act fully thereon. This is one that I indicated I would not read the entire article, so hopefully you've looked through it. Mr. Chori?
Good evening. Article 44. Amend the code of Harwich general bylaws, Chapter 8, Department Revolving Funds, Section 8-1 funds established. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 44 is accept and adopt as printed. Any debate? Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, can someone explain to me the function of a revolving fund, how it works?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Powers, revolving fund?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Good evening, folks. As part of the explanation, I'd also want to draw your attention first to page 15 of the motion book. And that, you will see are the annual reports that are required to be published for all of the revolving funds that the town has, in addition to the language that you see under Article 44 on page 42 of your warrant. Generally speaking, the revolving fund is a financial management tool that's allowed under statute. You can see the reference within that section that allows departments that have programs to charge rates for those programs, to keep those funds, and to revolve it into the program itself. So what you'll see in the motions book are the spending limits and the balances. And so it allows these departments, if this bylaw is adopted, we tend to change the language slightly every other year or so. And then under Article 45, you'll see that we're going to set the spending limits. So it allows those departments that have programs to retain some of their funds.
Okay, so it sort of works like a checking account, where money comes in and it goes out of the same money?
So what it does is it keeps it in a fund, rather than the general fund.
Okay.
And it's allowed to revolve for the program.
Okay. And who has the signing rights on these, or the authority to spend this money now?
So presently, these fall under either department heads for the appropriate program. In some cases, it's related employees, and in some cases, it's also committee chairs.
Okay. And why is this being suggested as a change, to have the town administrator in charge of these?
So it's suggesting town administrator or designate, and if I may, Mr. Moderator, in a moment.
Yeah, you may.
Go into more explanation about the entire article. What you'll see, starting on page 42 of the warrant book, is that there are changes to the use of funds under the golf, pro shop, and restaurant lease. You can see that presently, the authorization to spend is for the director, the golf director, the golf committee, and the assistant town administrator. Changing this to town administrator or designate doesn't change that. My intent, if this were to pass, is to identify the golf director specifically, but there's any number of other people that could be allowed to do that. The next line you can see is golf infrastructure fund. The only change there, again, is changing that from the director of golf and the golf committee to the town administrator or designate, council on aging, the council on aging director, and the council on aging. And that's actually a misnomer. We believe that was meant to be the council on aging committee, and that's part of the reason why we're trying to clean up the language. Fourth line for cemetery, we'll change it from administrator and cemetery commission. That's cemetery administrator and cemetery commission. Again, if this were to be adopted, I would designate the cemetery administrator. Community center is the community center director and the facilities committee. And so the designate on that would be the community center director. Continuing on to page 43, under recreation, it's the recreation director and the Recreation and Youth Commission, again, changing that to administrator or designate. Alboro House from the town planner and the historic district historical commission, changing that to administrator or designate. And the big part of the reason for this is coming up on the change for the building of 204 Sisson Road. But what we also see is that these are either department heads or administration that are doing it. We haven't had any of the committees do it. The intent is to streamline that. Under ADA, the intent of this article is to eliminate that completely. ADA revolving fund is Americans with Disabilities Act. The problem is that neither I, in my two years plus in administration, nor my immediate predecessor have ever received any funds for that. So it's not populated, and the board felt that that is a process that we can handle elsewhere. It's an unpopulated revolving fund and reducing that. Wetlands would go from Conservation Commission to town administrator or designate. The designate on that one would actually be our Conservation Agent. Middle School Cultural Center, the intent on that is to change it to 204 Sisson Road Municipal Building. And if you've watched any of the selectmen's meeting, the voter information committee meetings and all that, you know that my position is that building is a municipal building. The change had to happen because under authorized to spend, it was previously under the community center director. She no longer has that as part of her job responsibilities, and the facilities manager has not ever been responsible for fees out of that, so it would be town administrator or designate. Given that this town meeting adopted the position of director of cultural affairs, it would be my intent to name the director of cultural affairs as being the primary person authorized to spend. Sidewalks, there's the change in the designation, but also if you go over to use of funds, we're correcting where the word "now" has been in there for a few years. The intent was that it would be "new" and not "now". And then last but not least, treasurer or collector would be town administrator or designate.
So is your intent to designate the department heads that are associated with these different accounts?
Correct. To assign it to the department heads that are most closely related to these accounts and these purposes.
Okay. So not to... What happens if you feel like taking over all the budgets as the town administrator? Not you, but, you know, our town administrator decides they want to spend money out of these funds. Do we get to know what's being spent? And can you move it around without reporting it?
So I'll start with the last one first. No. And the short answer is, and the big part of the reason to have administration tied into this is that it already happens. So we want the bylaw to be reflective of that. But it is, the board gets, I believe we currently do a quarterly review or update from all the departments that have revolving funds. All of these revolving funds, this chapter ultimately dials back up to the board of selectmen. And so to your first part of the question, yes, there'll always be an accounting. And as we've said, as you can see in the motions book, there will be annual reports at town meeting.
Any further debate? Yes, Ms. McCarty? Yes, Ms. McCarty.
Ms. McCarty, Harwich Port. I'm having a real problem with this. This sounds like we're giving one person the authority of a whole bunch of departments, and you can write designate as long as you want to, but we both know that if it says town administrator, the town administrator can administer it. So, now we've said, okay, we don't trust that the people are going to do it the right way, so our town administrator's going to step in and take care of it. I have a real problem with that. I feel like we're losing, we do, we vote for things and they get passed, and then they say, oh, no, that's non-binding, so you people don't know really, we're going to do it our way. Pretty soon, we have to stop and say, do we go to elections for anything? Do we have people that they say are capable of running a department? And then say, you're capable, but let me hold those purse strings because you're not that capable. Thank you.
Further debate, Selectman Anderson?
Yes, I'd just like to say, we had a recent audit, and my understanding is these revolving funds get discussed every year at great length. And the audit came out very positive, thanks to a lot of work by our finance director, Carol Coppola, and our town administrator, Joe Powers. We hired Joe to run the town, and these are all funds that fall under different department heads. I have no reason to distrust that he isn't going to put the individual department heads in charge of the funds. Part of it is getting rid of really bad language that lists a title and a committee and, and somebody else. So, who really is in charge? This will make it clean. The town administrator will define, in most cases, a department head to manage our monies. That's why we hired him.
Further debate, gentleman in the middle.
Thank you, Craig Chadwick, precinct four. On the line item of sidewalks, I think the revenue source and the use of funds description are flip-flopped. It appears that the revenue source is listed as sidewalk improvements, consulting service of construction, and the use of funds is monies generated from receipts. Appears to me that those two should be flip-flopped.
Which one do you want, sir?
I'm sorry, sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
The revenue source column and the use of funds column?
Mm-hmm.
I think the descriptors should be flip-flopped.
Any comment on that?
Since we're trying to clean up language...
To expedite things, I got to nod that you're correct.
If I may, you are correct. The current bylaw reads, as you just identified, we would not object to that correction.
So, is that a motion to amend, Mr. Powers? If we're going to clean it up?
Sure. Yes, please.
Alright, so quickly, we have a motion to amend the Article forty-four, which is accept and adopt as printed, and under sidewalks, by changing the revenue source and the use of fund columns as, as described, switching them. Do I hear a second? Any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, by saying no. It carries unanimously. So, we're now back to the main motion, accept and adopt as printed, with that one change under sidewalks. Thank you. Uh, yes, you were next, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter. Nancy Curtis, East Harwich. I just want to reiterate some of the other comments, really, but get a little more definition. Having spent the better part of my career doing financial controls and procedures, the idea of naming someone eligible to spend funds being a undefined designate doesn't fall to my mind in any kind of audit, control, and procedure. So, I'm not crazy about the idea of giving all that authority to the town administrator. I'd rather see it be designated as the department heads, but if, maybe we should clean this up and not leave it undefined.
Further debate, Ms. Donahue.
Noreen Donahue, Headwaters, speaking on my own behalf. My memory of the report by the auditors on the spot review of our revolving accounts last year is a little bit different than what I've heard here tonight. My memory is that although they basically felt, they don't go into, you know, terrible depth with these things, they basically felt we were in good shape. We did have a lot of revolving accounts, but also, they said we were missing the reporting. So, I've heard tonight, you know, it alleged that we get quarterly reports. I've never seen one of those. I'm hoping to see one after this review from the auditors next year. As a matter of fact, I was going to be asking for that next October. On that note, since I've never seen one, you know, I'd like to know who signs the quarterly report. Is it, you know, will we know during that quarter which designate was the one controlling the account? Because it could be one designate for three months, and then another one for another three months. Bottom line, what I'm getting to is that I agree with the other speakers. I see this as going against transparency. I was really quite shocked to see it. I mean, anything to move something back to a general statement in this day and age, when we're trying to be detailed and transparent, I think is a mistake.
Further debate on the motion under Article forty-four. Mr. Kukounis?
With all due respect, I completely disagree with the previous speaker. I rise in support of this. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. I've been involved in county government, I've been involved in town government. The term checks and balances means a lot. When you have a town administrator that has his or her name as the designate, and that town administrator decides to appoint, or as it says here, designate, designate someone else, they're still on the hook, and they're still going to be making sure and watching over the way that works. And that's exactly why we have a town administrator. I would encourage you to absolutely support this. I think it is a much, much cleaner way to do it. I think when you have in a town warrant, and in a document such as this that gets voted here in town meeting, when you have specific designees, especially when you refer to committees, I mean, I don't know how many of you in this room have been on committees, but do you really feel comfortable having committees spend money? I would rather have it really be overseen by the administrator as this designates, and have that administrator have the power to, if they want to designate someone, fine, but you know they're the ones that are going to be checking it and making sure that those quarterly reports come in. So, please, support this.
Further debate, Finance Director, Carol Coppola.
I just wanted to make you aware of the processes that we have in place in, with any expenditure or receipt that comes into the town. These are no different than anything else. They go through a series of reviews. Every expenditure, whether it's a soccer ball or a tee-shirt, goes through the same amount of reviews as a fire engine would. We scrutinize these at numerous levels before they're finally arrived to the town administrator for his final approval, before an invoice can be paid. This is really no different than any other expenditure. This wouldn't change any process that we use. The department head would still be responsible to purchase that soccer ball, to process the receipt, to approve the transaction that comes to the finance office, where we have numerous folks that review and scrutinize these expenses. We compare them to the bylaw to make sure that the use of the funds are in line with the bylaw. And then, once those are approved, they go to the town administrator. So, this wouldn't not change anything at all. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Further debate, Mr. McCallum?
Sandy McClarty, East Harwich. I take Leo Kukounis's point of having committees allocate the funds and how that could bring confusion, but it seems like a simple solution for both points of view is to just, we, we want to change it to the department head, just specify that we want the department head, instead of, you know, clean up the language, instead of just leaving it ambiguous to the town administrator. If what we want to do is just stream that, streamline that to the department head, we'll just state that. Get rid of, if the problem is the committees and a whole bunch of people, but to me, it seems a little more transparent to just, and also, the, the department head is the person that's going to be most knowledgeable about how to spend that money. So, by putting it higher up, you're moving away from kind of the, the boots on the ground. I feel like, just clean up the language. And finally, there's one, Nate Donald Howell. I was curious if he'd care to say why he objected to this.
Mr. Howell, do you choose to respond to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You'll also note, I was not in favor of the totals that come in the successor article. We have way more revolving funds than any town our size. We have over one point one million dollars' worth of them. The money, in my mind, should go back in large measure to the town's budget and then be allocated through town meeting by appropriation generally. They, they obviously need some wiggle room, but they don't need that much. My, I do, however, agree, if we're going to have them, and I don't see how we're going to avoid it this year because we cripple the programs involved, but if we're going to have them, it really should be the town administrator who's governing that because there is no consistency. You're not even part of this process. As soon as you give them the money, if it's generically okay within the confines of the explanation, they can spend it, and you have absolutely nothing to say about it.
Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you. Because it's such a rare occasion, I agree with Mr. Howell.
Selectman Anderson, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to comment, because I, I respect the idea that why not have the department head there, since that is in all likelihood who is going to be in charge. But that doesn't take care if we have a department head that's out on an extended leave. This gives us the flexibility of having two people. The town administrator is in charge, or is a designate. Designate's gone somewhere, things don't get held up.
Any further debate on the motion before...
Me, please.
Yes.
Thanks. I just, I wanted to point out that the concerns here are valid. I think the idea of doing the streamlining is also valid. My concern is more with what could go wrong if we had a problem versus everything going exactly according to plan. I understand how it's supposed to work, but my concern is, what if it doesn't work that way? So, that's all.
Any further debate?
Ed Banks, Howard Center. To me, this is the way to do it. Because just like Mary just said, what if somebody's on an extended leave or something happens to them, or they retire or whatever? You're, you're tying his hands by saying it has to be the department head. He's still responsible. He, he's on the line, and I think he's doing a great job, and I think you should make it easier for him so that he can designate whoever he needs to do the job.
Further debate, Mr. Weiser, Bob Weiser?
I think we have a situation here which is really pretty elemental to our, to how we operate the town. We have the board of selectmen who, to whom the town administrator is accountable. We have a procedure in place in the financial area where there are quarterly reports expected. It seems to me that the assigning of responsibility to the town administrator or his designate gives the necessary flexibility, and the other procedures give the necessary accountability, and that if this doesn't work, we will certainly hear about it at next year's town meeting. And why not give this a try as a streamlining mechanism? Because I've worked with committees, and I'm not sure that having a committee spend two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars on improvements of the golf course, maybe everybody agrees, but if they don't agree, there's going to have to be some decision-making process. The town administrator, that's his job. And the select board, I'm sorry, the board of selectmen, we haven't got a select board yet, and the financial, the financial component provide the necessary oversight. So, I think we should approve this.
Further debate, gentleman in the middle here.
Dean Hedersted. I have a question and a concern. It deals with what is now called two zero one four, I believe it is, Sisson Road Municipal Building. This is the cultural center, I believe, and if that's what it is, why are we changing this to be a building? I am concerned that what you're doing is you're giving, giving the town administrator or whatever his designate may be authorization to use the money that's generated by the cultural center, use those funds, along with their own funds, use funds from the, from this town to rep, do what it says in the use of the funds, which is representing and doing the restoration, maintenance, and support of the building. Not the cultural center, or not the people or the work that they're doing, but the building. The building is not what we're trying to support here. We're trying to support a cultural center, not the people. I mean, the people, not the building. Though these funds are not to be used, I don't believe, to maintain the building. But that's, that's the title you've got for this particular revolving fund.
Thank you, Mr. Hedersted. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Looking at that line under the column, use of funds, that's the existing purpose, that's been the existing purpose of the revolving fund for what is presently titled, Middle School Cultural Center. So, when this town meeting amended this bylaw several years ago, this town meeting approved that use of fund. This article tonight does nothing to change that, and that's sort of the point we're trying to get to. The funds that are derived for that program at that building, the town has consistently used the funds for restoration, maintenance, care, and support. This is not changing, it's always been the case.
Further debate on the motion under Article forty-four. Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, we, I'm sorry, is there somebody else? Mr. McManus?
In listening to the discussion, it's clear that comments have been made on two facets of our revolving fund. One, in who has final approval for expenditures. The old language gave that final approval expenditures to directors and commissions in a variety of different combinations. Those directors and commissions obviously will still have a role in recommending what those funds are spent for, what are the needs of those programs, but the final approval of expending those funds will be left to the town administrator or the designate. It's not like the town administrator is going to say, oh, we've got ten thousand dollars here, I'm just going to have it spent on this, without being in consultation with the folks that run that particular program. The other side of it is, you know, whether or not to have so many revolving funds. And the purpose of a revolving fund, the principal one that makes it most clear is the recreation fund. The money that's raised is, it comes in from fees for people signing up for classes, and it's spent on the cost of providing, for the expense of running those classes. If it was run through the, the town budget, and we only budgeted in the recreation area, say, two hundred thousand dollars, instead of what is, the spending limit is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we had a whole... $200,000 instead of what is, the spending limit is $250,000, and we had a whole bunch of people sign up for classes, and we went over that expenditure, we would have to start telling people, sorry, we've hit our budgeted expenditure limit, you can't participate in the program. By having the expenditures tied to the fees that come in, it allows, if a program's popular, for all of those people that want to do that program, to be able to do so.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Karen Hornigan. I also have a problem with changing the name, as proposed here, to the municipal building. Back in Article 4, last night, when it was approved, that we have a part-time position of Director of Cultural Affairs. It's not the Director of the Municipal Building, A. And also, at the end, I'm not sure what article it is...
57.
57, where we're going to vote on having a study done. So we're proposing here, if we approve this article, to change the name of the department or the revolving fund or the building. But we already approved a position. I just find this very contradictory, and I don't think it's appropriate to be changing the name of the department or slash building that the revolving fund is appropriate for if we haven't voted yet to allow there to be a study. So I don't have a problem with the rest of this, but I have a serious problem with changing the name of a revolving fund before it's been studied.
Any further debate? It looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion under Article 44 is accept and adopt as printed, with one change. We change the revenue source to be the use of fund, and the use of fund to be the revenue source under sidewalks. That's the only change we've made. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 45. See if the town will vote to set the spending limits for various revolving funds that have been authorized pursuant to Section 8.1 of the Town Code and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 45, Annual Department Revolving Funds Authorization. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. And in parentheses at the bottom, it's if Article 44 is adopted and presented, additional amendments will be offered under this article.
That last thing that he read is not part of the motion. The motion is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed. Any debate? Mr. McManus.
Mr. Ford, I'd like to propose an amendment to Article 45. I move that we amend Article 45 to remove the line in the table referring to ADA.
Do you have that in writing?
Yes, I do.
If you could bring that forward, that'd be most helpful. So what Mr. McManus is moving is that the main motion, which is accept and adopt as printed, be amended to provide that we remove the line referring to ADA from what is printed. Do I hear a second? It's been seconded. Any debate on the proposed amendment? I just want to deal with the amendment for the moment. Mr. Hedersted, are you up for the amendment? All right. Mr. McManus.
The reason I moved the motion is, in the previous article, we eliminated the ADA line. So it doesn't make sense to have a spending limit for a fund that no longer exists.
Any further debate? Yes, sir.
As a follow-up to that, in the previous motion that we approved, we changed, oh, Charles Kruska, 6 T. Berry Ave., Harwich. We also changed the name of the revolving account from Middle School Cultural Center.
That's a different issue. If you want to raise that issue after we vote on this one, I'd be happy to recognize you. But I want to stick just with this one issue first. Yes, Mr. Sarkis.
Just a question. I believe that ADA is American Disabilities Act. Is that correct?
It is. I believe that's what the acronym is.
Okay. Is there a reason why we no longer support that?
It's not a question of supporting. Mr. McManus just pointed out that in the previous article, we didn't provide for an ADA revolving account. So we just don't have a revolving account on it.
Okay. So that it's just not necessary here?
That's correct.
Because it wasn't necessary there.
That's the suggestion of the amendment.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any further debate on the proposed amendment? Looks like you're ready for a vote on that. It's to amend the main motion by adding language that we remove the line referring to ADA from the table in the warrant. All those in favor of the amendment, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Further debate now on the main motion as amended. Mr. Hedersted was up.
Thank you. I find it interesting, and I'm going to end this with one question to the entire board. As I review both of these articles, Article 45 and Article 44, I note that everything that is specified in the beginning of these authorizations talk about a department. Now, I have spent some time going through the board's budget. And guess what? I went through every one of these funds identified as like pro shop and cemetery, et cetera. All of those, I found out in the budget by this town's board. There's a budget. There's a budget for every one of these programs, every one of these, what's called, a department. Isn't that funny? We have a budget for every one of these departments. I think that's wonderful. Whoops, I forgot. There's no budget for the middle school center. There's no budget for the Sisson Road, whatever it's called. I want a budget. Why do not we have a budget? It's imperative to give this town and the people in this town a budget. Where is the money? I don't want to bring it up, and maybe I should. But along with a budget comes where the funds are coming from and who is spending them. We don't know that. We don't even know how much money they're going to need for this department, because we don't have one identified as such in a budget. If it's buried somewhere in one of the other departments, then it should be broken out. But I think this town deserves a budget for this particular effort. And then maybe we can find out where the money has been spent and where the money is going to be spent in the future. Because at this point, all we've been reading is hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent per year for the last five years, have been spent, and we have no knowledge as to... All we know is that that money was over and above what the good people in the department who were there doing their jobs at the school building, that department, those people were working hard and paying good money to use that facility. And the money that they used, the money that they brought in, was credited to them. But guess what? We spent, and it's been recorded, we spent over $100,000 a year, roughly averaged, for the last five years, over and above what those good people brought in, and we don't have a foggiest idea of where the money went or who approved it. We don't. Maybe you do. That's why I want a budget. I want it as soon as you can, and I think the town deserves it.
Further debate on the motion under Article 45. Mr. Kakounas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to ask through you that I am planning to make a motion, if it's proper or if the selectmen want to, but one of the previous speakers did point it out that this particular article that we're voting on right now does identify the Middle School Cultural Center. Do you not agree with me that it would be proper, or is there a reason why we don't change it tonight? And I'm prepared to make a motion to the 2014 Sisson Road Municipal Building, so the two documents coincide. And I guess out of courtesy to you, sir, and we're going long this evening, if that's something that no one intentionally was not done, then I will not make the motion.
All right. So there's a motion to amend from Mr. Kakounas pending. Hasn't really been pushed across my podium yet. Mr. Powers, do you want to address that first?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I loathe coming up as much as I do, but Article 44 is amending a general bylaw. And so what this action, what the town meeting did tonight, will be sent to the Attorney General's Office for approval. We would expect that they will approve the amendments that were made. That automatically changes the name under the spending act. The spending act is related to it, but not part of the bylaw.
Thank you. And then I will not make the motion. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. But I would like to take a minute just to speak on this.
Your forbearance on the amendment is appreciated, Mr. Kakounas.
Well, that's why I figured I'd ask, because, you know, there's no use of wasting time if it can be done automatically. The comments of the previous speaker that got up, and people really have to understand and really know what we're voting here. We actually created a lot of these. In fact, I think the very first revolving fund, Carol Thayer's still in the House somewhere, when I served on the Finance Committee a number of years ago. Once again, this is not really a budget to operate a department. These are not monies to operate a department. These are monies that certain departments bring in for reasons. I'll use, and I think someone eloquently used, a sporting event, say, soccer team wants to use the property out here, and they buy soccer balls and uniforms, and they buy them through the town. The town takes that money and puts it into these revolving funds, and directly uses that money from year to year to keep those programs running for the kids, for the adults. We talked earlier about pickleball. So these are different than specifically a department's budget. Now, I'm not disagreeing with the gentleman that we probably do need some better and clearer budgeting on certain areas, but please don't let that affect your vote this evening on this particular article, because this one here really sets up and creates the revolving fund system. That, in fact, does go on to help the department heads run their different programs that they run. It's very important, and it's a great way to do it. So thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Houston.
I just, through you, Mr. Moderator, have a question that either Mr. Powers or the Board of Selectmen could answer. None of the money in this, any of these revolving funds is tax money. It's money that's collected by people paying fees. Is that not correct?
Mr. Powers.
That is correct. Program fees.
Any further debate under the motion under Article 45?
Mr. Moderator, if I may...
Mr. Powers.
And I promise to be brief. But my comments are relative to Article 45, and the action, we're asking you to take in a moment to set the spending limit. Under this article, you see that, and under the previous article, there was discussion on reporting. I just want to emphasize again, because the reporting gets to this article and the spending limit. If, again, you go back to the motions book on page 15, and the comments were made about transparency. Revolving funds are under our general bylaws under Chapter 8, and that's what we just amended under Article 44. And if you look at Chapter 8 of the bylaws, it has certain requirements. What it does not have is a reporting requirement. So the Board of Selectmen, I believe, for as long as the town has had revolving funds, has mandated by directive that any department that has a revolving fund provide a quarterly report, the 15th day following the previous quarter end, that goes before the board. They're always in the town administrator's report, and they're always available at selectmen's meetings. But to the point of transparency, you heard a reference earlier to an audit that was requested by our finance director to audit the revolving fund process as a spirit of transparency and openness. And what we discovered from that audit was all generally very good news. They're very well managed, they're appropriately set, and we do not exceed spending limits. But what we also discovered from the audit, and we did not know, and I say "we," meaning institutionally for years, is that there is a requirement that there be an annual report at town meeting. And this is the first year that we're doing that, and that's what you see in the motions book on page 15. It's a full-year accounting for the previous year for revolving funds. I don't mean to speak too much, but the point of transparency hits very personally and professionally to me, to the finance director, and I know to the board. This is the first time this town has been this transparent, and it's an activity that we will continue, either with the quarterly reports and the annual report, if not more. I would urge you to adopt the article. Thank you.
Further debate on 45. Looks like you're ready for a vote. So our motion is accept and adopt, with one change, the amendment brought by Mr. McManus to strike the ADA line. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries unanimously. Article 46. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, to establish a procedure that would allow the town treasurer to dispose of abandoned funds held in custody of the town and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 47. Adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, Assessment of Local Taxes, Property Exemptions. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
We need 46. I wish we were on 47, too, John, but we're not.[1601.13][1601.13](Laughter).
Sorry. Sorry about that. Article 46. Adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, disposition of unclaimed property. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion under Article 46 is accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Carries unanimously. It carries. Article 47. See if the town will vote to reaffirm and extend Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56. Upon acceptance of this section by the town, the Board of Assessors may grant real and personal property tax abatement, up to 100% of the total tax assessed to members of the Massachusetts National Guard and to reservists on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year they perform such services, subject to eligibility criteria to be established by the Board of Assessors. The authority to grant abatements under this section shall expire after two years of acceptance, unless extended by a vote of the town. Said change to take effect FY 2023 and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 47. Adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, Assessment of Local Taxes, Property Exemptions. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion under Article 47 is accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Mr. Kakounas?
I just rise to make sure that the record shows that Richard Waystack is not here. This is the 35th year of town meetings he has not attended, and I want to make sure that the record shows that. So on behalf of Richard Waystack, I'm going to ask that the audience, please, accept this. It is a great thing for us, our assessors, to be able to do, and certainly, this is a requirement by the law to have it in front of town meetings. So thank you, and please pass it.
I hope Richard has a good excuse, Leo.[1725.73][1725.73](Laughter). Any further debate under the motion under Article 47? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 48. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 5N, effective fiscal year 2023, allowing the town to enter into a senior citizen and veteran property tax work-off abatement program and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 48. Adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 5N, Senior Citizen and Veteran Property Tax Work-Off Abatement Programs. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion under Article 48 is accept and adopted as printed. Any debate? I don't see any or hear any. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It carries unanimously. Article 49. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to pay... sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior years, as provided for in General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 49. Fund prior years unpaid bills. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of $756.34 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 49 is accept and adopt as printed. The, the number is the same as in your warrant, $756.35, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. A motion to pay unpaid bills requires a four-fifths majority to pass, just so you know. I saw a hand waving. Yes?
Hi. I'm just curious what departments these bills are from.
We'll get you an answer, just a moment. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's my understanding that these were bills for administration and the office of the town clerk.
Any further debate? So we need a four-fifths majority to pass, so unless it's unanimous, I'll have to take a standing count. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 50. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for the Howard Chamber of Commerce to promote the town and its businesses and cultural endeavors to advance economic development initiatives for and with the town of Howard. Said monies to be used to manage and fulfill year-round visitor-resident business information services and to promote and market the town. Generate and initiate materials and activities that encourage the establishment, growth, sustainability of businesses in Howard, and implement economic development objectives and activities in partnership with the town. Mr. Chori.
Article 50. Promote the town of Howard. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of $30,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Second.
Motion under Article 50 is accept and adopt. The sum is 30,000. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 51. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to supplement the Massachusetts Cultural Council annual allocation for community grant awards to artists, performers, and interpretive science, who bring events and programs to local venues, which enhance the cultural experience of Howard's citizens of all ages, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 51. Supplemental annual allocation of mass cultural grants for local cultural council grants. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of $3,600 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Second.
Motion under Article 51 is accept and adopt. The sum is $3,600. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 52. This is the first of a series of citizen initiative petitions. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $20,000 to help defray the expenses of the Chase Library and the Howardport Library. Said funds to be expended in the direction of the Chase Library and the Howardport Library trustees and to act fully thereon. Mr. Chori.
Article 52. Defray the expense of the Chase Library and the Howardport Library. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that the sum of $20,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's been made in second under Article 52 to accept and adopt, and the sum is 20,000 to be transferred from free cash. Any debate on the motion under Article 52? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 53. To see if the town will vote to instruct the Board of Selectmen, acting on behalf of the town, to petition the state legislature to amend the Massachusetts general laws governing the dispersal, excuse me, of school choice funds, to include accredited homeschool participants and accredited private schools. Finance Committee does not have a positive motion. Do I have a positive motion on this article? Yes, sir.
I'm Baker from West Howard. Yes, I recommend to accept and adopt.
Okay, so there's a main motion to accept and adopt the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Mr. Baker, you're recognized for debate.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is basically about the money following the student. The reason for this article is we've waited long enough for the federal government to act on funding alternative learning, but I'm confident we can address that on the state level, as other states have done. New Hampshire did something similar back last year, the fall of last year. Also, this article gives me an opportunity to stand up for freedom, freedom of choice in education, and to start the conversation by gathering local support to compel state legislators to act on the concept of expanding school choice. This is a non-binding initiative. No laws will be passed as a result of the vote tonight. Again, it simply authorizes our select board to petition the state legislature to amend the Mass. General Laws to expand school choice. This same article will also be heard on the Dennis Town Meeting floor later on this evening. And as far as I know, Howard Town Meeting will be the first in Massachusetts to weigh in and hopefully support this initiative, and I'm excited to bring this opportunity to you. So why do I think this initiative is necessary? The current school choice program is simply not fair or equitable for alternative learners, private schoolers and homeschoolers. The families that choose alternative education outside of the public school in the charter school system have to pay for their alternative education, and they have to pay for a school system that does not fit their needs. And they also have to pay for a school choice program that they're excluded from, with no way to recoup the money. Also, alternative learners are paying extra during the most financially demanding period for a family while raising children. Alternative learning is also in evolving need. I found some data on the, the Montomoy School Committee website, the September 2021 Agenda, which shows that the, over a three-year period, from 2018 to September 2021, there was about a 350% increase in non-COVID homeschooling. Also, according to the Massachusetts Family Institute, this is during the COVID period, 37,000 students left the public school system to be homeschooled. That's about 12.1% of all the students in Massachusetts, or an 800% increase. Another data point I found interesting while researching was that there are 1,100 students Capewide that are in the charter school system, which means they left their public school and they're now in the charter school system. I, I didn't know we had a charter school system that large. Also, as the number of alternative learners increases, so does the needs for the funds to follow the student. Another, another point here is that initially, school choice only included the public school system. It was amended to include charter schools, which are outside of the public school system. With, the original system worked by if a student went from one public school to another, $5,000 was transferred. When they added the charter school system, which is outside of the public school system, if a student leaves a public schools, a public school and goes to a charter school, the full tuition is transferred for the charter school, which is, on average, $19,000. So Capewide, if you do the numbers, it's roughly $20 million that now leaves the public school system into the charter school system. So there's kind of a precedent already set here for what I'm proposing with other credible types of, of learning, like private school and, and accredited homeschooling. Also, there's some positive support already in Howard for this. If you look at your warrant, you'll see that the select board voted three to two recommending to accept and adopt the article. So again, this is an effort to gather local support and to get the conversation started at the State House level. No laws will be changed by voting yes tonight. And so if you believe in greater freedom of choice in education, greater diversity in education, fair and equitable treatment for all, greater student success, please help me to stand up for freedom and vote yes for this article, so we can take the next step and send this conversation to the State House where it belongs. Thank you.
All right. I'd ask you to hold, hold your applause, please. Further debate, I see the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Carpenter, and I think you're a voter here now, as I recall.
Yeah, I bought a house in Howard, so I wouldn't have to sit on the bleachers anymore.
All right. Those are tough bleachers to sit on, so.
So Scott Carpenter, Superintendent of Montomoy Regional, but also 25 Harwood Ave. I just want to correct a couple factual things, at least in the description of the article. You know, it starts out by saying that there are 70 or so Howard and Chatham families that choose to homeschool. The reality is, we actually have some of the lowest amounts of families that are homeschooling in, in our community, and, and some of the lowest that are heading off out to other options, you know, which is, I think, a testament of the quality of what you've got going here with your public schools. So, so the reality is that we have 19 Howard families, seven Chatham families that elect to homeschool. What would be more correct is if, is if the, the article was written so we have 70 or so families from Howard and Chatham who choose to homeschool. There's 40 homeschool children. There's eight that go to private schools. There are 25 that go to parochial schools, so 73 total that don't use a public school system of any way, shape, or form. But I also, and, and that represents about 5% of the total children in Howard and Chatham combined. So to, you sort of understand the financial impact to this, and I understand, you know, the petitioner wants to say, have the money follow the children. Currently, children who are in parochial schools, private schools, or homeschools, money isn't following them. Your tax dollars aren't following them. So there's a financial impact above and beyond. So there's, you know, how are we going to fund these? The article talks about now using the school choice legislation, and the school choice legislation, $5,000 follows a student. So those 73 children times $5,000, there's $365,000 that this is creating a new tax burden. So we have to keep in mind now, where does that $365,000 come from? The way the legislation operates is, would take it from your local school district's budget. So the 95% of the families that have children that go to the public schools, it's in your interest to vote this down, because it's taking 365,000, or what I would say, you know, roughly four to five teachers' equivalent, out of your local school system and degrading it compared to what you currently have. If you are a homeowner in our community, I would argue it's in your interest to vote this down, because it's in your best interest to maintain strong local school systems, not degrade from them, because your, the quality of your school system impacts your property values. You have better school systems, better property values. And at the end of the day, for me, this is really about, I think yesterday when we were having the pickleball conversation, it's about what is the common good? And, and for me, it's, it's, you know, that we all pay into the tax base to support the common good, and part of that common good is a strong public school system. I'm blessed, this year, my youngest will be graduating from Montomoy Regional. Both of my kids have gotten great educations at Montomoy Regional. Next year, like many of us in this room, I will not have a child in our local public school systems. Should I be asking for a $5,000 refund because I'm not going to be using the public school system, or is that part of the common good? I haven't had to call these guys for 911 for the last nine years that I've been living on the Cape. Should I be getting a refund for that piece of, of my, you know, my tax dollars? Or the, you know, or the roads in Howard that I don't drive on? I, I think at the end of the day, you know, this is partly about that common good, so thank you.
Further debate, I will tell you that I'm going to go now to a voter who, for medical reasons, can't be in the main hall, but has been with us and following the meeting from a separate room here at the Community Center. Sharon Stout, she is a member of the school committee, and we're trying to get a microphone to her. She's not going to be able to come into the hall, but close by, and Sharon wants to address the meeting.
I, I really thank the Howard Finance Committee, all seven members unanimously, and I think wisely, voted to indefinitely postpone this article. The progress, the first speaker correctly stated that our rise in Massachusetts, unlike some states, but many states, did increase, according to the Census Bureau, for homeschooling from 1.5 to 12%. That was because of COVID. Lots of people now are very comfortable staying home. One in five women left the workforce during that time, and many have not returned, especially those that are doing homeschooling. Parents have many choices, many more than ever. As the speaker said, they have school choice, they're meant, they have, they can go to other districts, they can go to charter schools, and they can go to homeschooling, where there are a number of free curriculums. Montomoy Regional School is an educational service, just like the other services the town provides. It's important that we have a good quality education for our children at school, and we do at this point. Like other services in town, all of us do not utilize all of the services. I don't use counseling, aging, youth counselor, recreation center, or luckily, fire, police. That may change. But I don't look, and none of us are entitled, to get an amount back because we're not using one of our quality town services. The first speaker alluded to alternative learners. I have no idea what that meant. Our public schools are key in providing high-quality learning to all different types of learners. So there'd be no type of learning, learning disabilities, or any other type of learning that we wouldn't provide very skilled, highly-trained teachers to provide for that. If, as Dr. Carpenter said, this article passed, this is going to cost, I believe, at least half a million dollars for next year in growing numbers. I don't think that's something we want to fund, and I don't think paying for services that are unused is a door we want to open. I urge you to vote no on this article.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Next up over here, lady.
I think you're on. Yeah, you are.
Just need to speak right into it. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Megan Smith. I live in Howard Center. When young families are looking for a town to move to, they look for three primary things: police, fire, and schools. I am so proud of how Howard has always supported these three important parts of our community. However, this proposal, if passed by the state, would undermine the strong school district that we have. I understand that parents and families may have differing viewpoints from the curricula currently in place in our schools. Fortunately, they have the option of school choice, which is something that is available to all students and families in our district. Current school choice includes neighboring districts that have space, as well as charters who accept students on a lottery system. This ensures that any student has an equal opportunity to attend that school. Private schools do not provide such a lottery system, and therefore favor families of higher wealth. This proposal, as written, if passed at a state level, would not improve that. Private schools would still be able to pick and choose students that attend. It would just allow them to siphon funds. to pick and choose students that attend. It would just allow them to siphon funds from our taxpayers. The result is, the students who need the most support in our public schools are left with lesser funding. I also understand that some families may choose to homeschool. It's fantastic that these families have that option. However, that is the family's choice to stay home and create their own curriculum to meet the state educational requirements. Many families cannot afford to stay home to educate their children due to working requirements, and this proposal would again chisel away at the funding for those public school students. A final argument that we have heard tonight for this proposal surrounds concerns about the curriculum or school atmosphere. If I have concerns about, for example, the fire department, which for the record, I don't, no concerns, I would first contact the fire chief and maybe the Board of Selectmen. I guess, I'm not really positive how that chain of command goes, but I would follow that chain of command to express my concerns. I wouldn't propose a piece of legislation at the state level that would allow me to receive funding for a fire suppression system in my home so I could avoid using the fire department. The citizens behind this proposal should have conversations with the Superintendent and the School Committee to bring about change. Run for school committee, enact change. Don't try to turn publicly-funded core programs in our town into a cafeteria system where we only pay for what we use and we get refunds for what we don't use. I pay for the senior center because it's important to our town. I pay for the fire department even though I fortunately have not had to use it yet. I pay for the police department, and again, I have not had to call them. I'm not asking for those funds to be diverted. It's the cost of living in such an amazing town. One final thought, the proposal as it was written has significant errors in it, including most blatantly, as Dr. Carpenter mentioned, fabricating the number of homeschooling families in Harwich. This was a red flag for me when I read it, but even more so when I learned that the exact same proposal was written for Dennis's town meeting tonight. Their warrant has the exact same petition written word for word, except that it changed Monomoy to Dennis Yarmouth Schools. This makes me worry that the petition was not in fact written by a local citizen worried about their family, but rather is being sponsored by a larger program with deeper pockets and potentially ulterior motives. If we're going to ask our select board to make a petition to the state, such a petition should represent the residents of our town as a whole and not any corporate plans of someone who's trying to manipulate us. Please vote no to this petition. Thank you.
Further debate, woman over here.
Sherri Armstrong, South Harwich. Access to a free and public education, which was first established in Massachusetts, is the most important safeguard we have to ensure equity for our children. We can all agree that it is costly, at times imperfect, but it is planning for the future. The children of today are our leaders for tomorrow. On the most basic level, Article 53 will divert funding from public education to individuals and private schools. I appreciate the choices that families have in decisions about educating their children, but I do not want to support and have my tax dollars distributed to individual families to do so. It is important that our tax dollars be made available to support education that is available to all children. Not everyone has the privilege of selecting private schools or homeschooling, or even the desire to do so. We have excellent schools in the Monomoy District, and as Dr. Carpenter said, that is commensurate with our property values, having these excellent schools. We have 1,900 students who attend Monomoy, 1,900 students. We must protect their right to free and public education. Diverting funds will directly impact the quality of education they have and the choice that they have made to attend public school. Tax dollars are meant to work for the collective, not the individual. And again, I'll repeat that because it is so important, as our last speaker said, and many other speakers have said. We pay for these services in our town whether we use them or not because they are important to maintain the quality of life that we all desire. That's why we are here, and that includes our public education system. Tax dollars are meant to work for the collective. This is why it is so important to vote no on Article 53. Please preserve public education for our children and our future. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly.
Alice Kelly, East Harwich. I'm speaking against this, to vote against this as well. When I was teaching at the University of Pennsylvania and living in Pennsylvania, my husband and I bought a house in a town that had famously good schools. The taxes were high, but that was fine because my kids, I really wanted to have them have the best education. Fortunately, or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, my older son turned out to have Asperger's Syndrome. He was a difficult child to teach. And my husband and I talked about this at great length and decided that the best bet for him was to go to a Quaker school in Philadelphia where they had approaches to that kind of wiring that would give him the best chance to be successful. So we sent him there, but that meant we had to pay for that private school, and it was pretty expensive. To our joy, they did a wonderful job. And he ended up going to an Ivy League school and is now working at an Ivy League school, and finally got to the point of being able to manage well enough that he now is married and has a little boy of his own who also has a disability. So I understand why people might, in some instances, decide that they really need to put their child in a different kind of schooling. But to my mind, as that earlier speaker spoke, that has no effect on your willingness to pay taxes to support the public schools. There are states in this country who do not support their public schools, and they have disastrous results. I am so proud to be a Harwich person who lives in a town where the good of the kids is paramount, and that people are willing to make sacrifices, whether they have children or not, so that people who have children and go to the public schools can get a really good education, get support, get all that they need. And I volunteered at the elementary school where I went myself years and years ago, and was so impressed at what good work the people were doing with those children. So I think we need to keep the money from our taxes for the public schools, and if people choose to have some alternative way of educating their children, more power to them, but that shouldn't have an effect on our support for the public schools.
Thank you. Further debate, gentleman to my left.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ricardo. I'm from East Harwich, and I did graduate from Harwich High a long time ago. I had a wonderful experience. However, having said that, competition does promote higher standards at a reasonable cost in overall good school systems. So besides that, we live in a resort area. I believe over half of the households in the town of Harwich don't have children that go into the school system, but they still pay property taxes for our school system. So I believe that the school system here in Harwich gets plenty of money from the taxpayer. So I support this citizen initiative. Thank you very much.
Further debate, this gentleman over here.
Yes, the Finance Committee recommends this article be indefinitely postponed. There has been expression. People have been clear, they've been articulate. I call the question. Let's bring this to a vote, please.
The gentleman has made a motion to move the previous question, which is to terminate debate. It's a non-debatable motion and requires a three-fourth majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 53, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule the motion did not carry. Mr. Baker, I've already had you. You have two times in a total of 10 minutes. Let me get somebody new. I can come back to you before we finish. Gentleman behind you, please.
Fane Wells from Precinct 2, and I would urge you all to take a vote on it and vote in a positive way for it, because this costs us nothing, and we're looking for this to go to the state. The state will do its thing, like it normally does, and put it on its back burner and not really do anything with it. All right? So it's not going to cost us anything, no matter what you've heard tonight. It's not going to cost us anything, but what it is doing is it's telling the school board and the unions that run our teachers and run our school boards, it's telling them they're on fair notice. Get your act together, all right? We don't want CRT taught in our classrooms.
Sir?
No, we don't.
No, sir, we're getting off the debate here. Keep your comments to the article, please.
All right. I think we should keep it and vote for it. Let the state put it in its dead file bill, but at least let them know that there's a town here on the Cape that would like this to go forward. Thank you.
This lady over here.
Hello?
Got to speak right into it.
I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Baker for bringing this initiative to the town. I think it's brought a topic up that a lot of people either don't think about or don't know a lot about. I was very fortunate to homeschool my two children through high school very successfully, so this is a passionate topic for me. I do, specifically to Mr. Baker, in the language here, it talks about accredited homeschools. And I just want to kind of educate everybody here. There are a lot of ways to homeschool. Accredited homeschooling is one way, but quite a few of us, like myself, did not go through an accredited homeschool program. We, you know, kind of put our curriculum together. The Superintendent says, yes, that's fine. So if this were to pass, I do have a concern that it's only accredited homeschools. Whether it passes or not, whether it is, what is the term, delayed or, you know, put off, I just think it's a good, it's a good thing that this topic has come up. I think it just gets people thinking about something they may not have already. And I can only speak for myself and our family, but if this had been in place when we were homeschooling and school choice funds were offered to us to help us pay, we would have turned down the money because part of our reason personally was, we do not want the government educating our children. So we personally would have said, thank you, but no, thank you. I think there are a lot of people that feel that way. So I just encourage people to ask your neighbors, talk to people who do homeschool, and ask them, why, why do you do it? Or why do you send them to public school? Thank you.
Mr. Clary.
Sandy McClarity. I'm going to take a contrarian view, but before I do, I would say I graduated from Cape Cod Tech. I had many wonderful teachers. Richard Saponi was my instructor for electrical. I could name a bunch of teachers that I hold in very high regard. So please, you know, don't take this as a blanket statement. I respect a lot of teachers. There's a lot of good people working in the system. However, my wife and I do homeschool, and these are some of the things I would like to say. To me, it's a little bit insulting to categorize this as a tax burden. So when homeschoolers get some money, it's a tax burden, but when we're pitching the idea for public school, we're investing in the future. That seems to me a little offensive. We didn't homeschool for religious reasons. I know that's a valid reason for many people. We were, at the time, pastoring in Trenton, New Jersey. There was a lot of crime and violence in the school we were a part of. And so for that reason, and others, I won't get into, why we decided to homeschool. I was against the idea initially. It transferred when we moved up here. We're in the Monomoy, obviously, school district, and they've been very helpful, and we do homeschool. All of my kids have the choice to go to public school, and my daughter elected to go. First week of school, on the bus ride, the bullies on the bus were showing porn on their phones throughout the whole trip, and this happened multiple times. Thank God I have a relationship with my kids, and she told us about it. I was fuming. It took me a few days to get ahold of somebody to respond, and they did. They dealt with the problem, I will say that. That was my first shock. Then she came to us complaining, one of the teachers, who I won't name, would call out kids for getting low test scores and humiliating them. They happened to be foreigners. I was born in Spain. I was born in Bismarck Granada, and so to hear about, you know, I forget if they were Brazilian or what, but to hear about, you know, I couldn't speak English when I came to this country. I was eight years old. And to hear these kids ostracized just boiled my blood. And I told my wife, go down and talk to the principal about this. My daughter was getting straight A's in this class, but it bothered her that these kids were being called out. And the principal said, well, they're getting good test scores. You know, the teacher consistently gets good test scores. The point is that it's not all about the test, and I think that's a different discussion. But, so we had some very negative experiences. In the end, my daughter decided to go back to homeschool because she didn't have enough time to read, ironically. On a positive note, my son, who is dyslexic, has been homeschooling the whole time. He was a very late reader. He probably started reading around maybe 11 years old, 12, 13 years old, which is very, very late. And I believe that the education format that we've provided for him has really helped him. He now, by providing good literature, we would read to him, you know, Rudyard Kipling, whatever, Mark Twain. By, even though he couldn't read it himself, by reading to him, he had an appetite for literature. And today, I can say, he reads to learn. He reads for enjoyment on his own. Many times, I have to scold him to stop reading and get, clean up his room or something. And so I feel, you know, for some people, the public school just doesn't work, and that's not a criticism on the public school necessarily. But, so those are some thoughts as far as, you know, this particular motion. I don't really, you know, I'm going to homeschool regardless. I don't really care what people vote on this. You know, I haven't looked at it carefully, but I just wanted to add that to the mix.
Thank you. Selectman Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not going to go and repeat the many smart and wonderful comments that have been made about our community tonight. I'll just name a couple in the sense that, you know, we're talking about money's going to private parochial and homeschooling, and we're talking about the impacts to our children of COVID. COVID has affected every single person, and no more greater than the children. So do I understand that there are certain scenarios, maybe where public school is not working for some kids? I certainly do, and I certainly respect the ability for all parents to choose how they wish to educate their children. But I would ask this town meeting to think about the long view, and the long view that we collectively looked at several years ago in understanding the need to regionalize, and how important that was for our towns to continue to invest in our children, to have a positive education that was committed to growth. That has benefited our children, our town, and our tax base. So to the point made about investing in your community, it's your taxes in terms of looking at what you're willing to put into your schools and what you get out of them. If you don't have children in schools, it still is an investment in your community. It raises your real estate values, and that's important. Based on many discussions we've had in the last two days, we understand how people feel about their money, and rightly so. So I would ask you to have the long view again. The state, to the other comment, that this will go up to the state, it's not binding, et cetera, those are all true statements. But you also have to think about a choice to homeschool your children, and those of you who are doing it, I applaud you. It's not easy work. But I would also say that there's a whole curriculum there that needs to be assessed. to be assessed. How is it audited? How are the children tested? There are multiple things at the state level that this probably won't go very far. But I still remind you, for the long view, invest in your community and build your community, rather than have tax dollars leave, that we committed to a regional agreement to strengthen our schools. We don't want to see our children impacted either. I don't have kids in school anymore either. But I will continue to invest in the school district in which I live, and I ask you to do the same. I did not support this. I was one of two negative votes. Thank you.
Further debate, yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Heidi Baker. I am from Harwich, the West Harwich area. For perspective, I am 24. So recently going to Harwich School Systems, I was really excited to get out of the Harwich School System and go do Cape Cod Tech for an alternative learning scenario. Now, the reason why I was excited is because the Harwich School System, having gone recently there, I know what it's like more than most of you people in this room. It was not for me. It was not for, it was not for a majority of people. However, speaking on what Julie Kavanaugh had said, she wants to endorse and invest in your community. You will invest in your community just the same as if you let your child go to an accredited homeschool or a private school. That child still lives in that community. You are still doing good. You are still investing in their education, if not even, even more so, because that child is starting to understand and learn better for them. They are in a comfortable scenario. They will do better. They are not going to be upset in a public school system. So I heard a few comments about privilege and all these other buzzwords. I'm sorry, but it's not a privilege. Sometimes you feel that you need to not be in that public school system. Sometimes you feel that you would learn better possibly being homeschooled. We were going to do it, however, however, my dad is Dan Baker, and we did not because it was such a financial burden. I think I would have learned much better and been a much happier student had this been an option. And I know I'm not the only one who feels this way. There were, there were so many kids that were going through hell and back with, with other kids, through students, through other grades. It was just, it's not for everybody. Not everybody wants to go to school every day on a bus with loud people. Not every day, people, especially now that they have anxieties and stress and depression, and it's just not for everybody. And I think, if anything, you all need to think about this. It gives people freedom of choice. People need choices. People need to have a choice of how they want to raise their child. Yes, I understand how this will help a community if, if the $6,000 was to stay in that school. Okay, that's great. However, it's not great when that child is upset, and then that sets 12 years of their early life being upset. Not, and I understand grit and being able to get through something. However, if it's not working, it's not working. And people need choices, and you will still be investing in your community by doing this. It does not cost a penny. This is just to start the motion. This is just to start the conversation that the accredited homeschoolers or anyone that's going to private school is going to stand up for their child and what is best for their child. Isn't that what we all want? Isn't that what we all hope for? Is to do what's best for our kid? This gives you that option. This doesn't force you to go into a different school or to a school that is upsetting your kid. Yes, you could go to NOSIT. Yes, you could go to D, to DY. However, maybe that's not what you want for your kid. So, being 24, being in this community, being one of the few younger people in this room, I want you to put yourself in my shoes, as I would like to have a family one day here on the Cape, and I would like to have the choice of what is best for my future family and my future kids. Thank you.
Further debate, we've got this woman over here.
Joanne Klingon, 50 Cornerwood Drive. One of my daughters attended charter schools. She attended Lighthouse Public Charter, and then she attended Sturgis Public Charter. And I just wanted to point out that charter schools in Massachusetts are public. And I think it was stated in the beginning that money went to charters which are private. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that they are public. Thank you.
Any further debate? This gentleman over here, Snow.
Yep. Hi, Spencer Evans, One Panorama Point Drive, Harwich. I just want to speak as a young person, but also as an employment coach with people with disabilities. The reality is, this is a collective fund. This isn't just an individual fund. Having, people with disabilities often takes more funding, including for special education. So I've heard many people talk about alternative learning. Well, alternative learning, you have to have funding in the schools. So to say that this is one amount that goes to one student is just not true. Oftentimes, also with people with disabilities, there's a huge cost burden that goes way beyond education. And so I just want to speak out to the collective need here in order to help uplift all of our students, because this is a collective fund. To say that this is an individual, I think the idea of, I don't pay taxes for a street I don't drive down is exactly correct. I still pay taxes because other people may use that. We talk about, I would use food stamps as an example. I don't personally use food stamps, but I think it should be available for those people who do need it. So I would just strongly urge people to vote no on this, on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Mr. Kakounas, and then Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Couple of things I just want to clarify, because I want to make sure that everybody here tonight knows what they're voting on. Statement made that this is going to take our taxpayers' dollars from us next year is absolutely positively incorrect. Okay? That's not what we're doing tonight. What we did tonight is we established an excellent forum for debate. And as all of you in this room who know me know that I love a debate. So I will also tell you this evening that the young lady that stood at this mic a while back and stated that this particular article was written by some conglomerate that has ulterior motives, and I looked to Mr. Baker to ask his permission if this is okay. We do not know each other. We've never met personally. I wrote this article. I don't think I'm a big conglomerate that has some kind of underlying nasty deed, okay?
Unless there's something you want to disclose to us, Mr. Kakounas.
I wanted to have this debate. I think it's an excellent topic to debate. I think the legislature should debate it. I think the Commonwealth of Massachusetts should debate it. And I think this is something that should be debated across the country. And I was proud to be asked by a citizen of this town. When he called me, he said, I've heard you on town meeting floor. I've heard you talk. Can you help me draft some language? Now, in truth of disclosure, I had nothing to do with the explanation. Reason is, you're not voting the explanation. You're voting that little small paragraph that starts with Article 53. And all you're voting tonight is to just ask, I used the word instruct, which I understand was wrong, and I think I should have used advise or ask, the Board of Selectmen, in behalf of this body, the legislative body, to ask Sarah Peak, our state legislature, to bring this topic up, up at the State House. It's a long, long process. Believe me, it's not going to happen in 12 months. Some of you have even commented it may never happen, and I may agree with you, it may not. But what a great topic to debate, because everything that was said here this evening, every single point, except the one about some conglomerate writing this, was spot on. This is investing in our children, and this needs to be looked at, and it needs to be debated. And that's why I rise tonight to ask you to please support it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baker. And Mr. Baker, we have a time limit of 10 minutes. I kept track of your presentation. It was nine. So you've got, you've got one more minute.
Yeah, this is going to be quick. The number 70 in the explanation for the number of homeschooling families, that was during COVID. It was 78 families that were homeschooling during COVID. And I think it, the numbers that I saw recently, it, it went down to 37, and then nine of those families were because of COVID. So 28 families as of September 21, they, that was the total that were non-COVID. So if you go from 2018, there were eight families, and to 28, that's about a 350% increase of non-COVID from 2018 to September 21. I just wanted to give a quick explanation on that.
Thank you. Anybody new? Anybody who hasn't spoken? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Jonna Powell. I live in Harwich Center. I wasn't preparing to speak tonight, but just hearing the debate, I do appreciate everybody's opinions and everything, and just wanted to give my personal story as a little perspective to think outside your own traditional, whatever you and your personal family went through. We know that there are untraditional families. There's a whole bunch of different types of situations that people live through. I myself went, grew up with three siblings with a single mother, and we lived in one place from the time I was in kindergarten through eighth grade, and we went to the public school system in a very low-income, poor school district, but it was what it is. And then before the '08 crash, something happened, and the owner of the house that we rented had to sell the house, and we became homeless. So I moved in with a friend. My siblings, my younger siblings moved in to a shelter with my mom, and my older sister moved in with her boyfriend because she was 17. So my mom then got back on her feet within a year, and then the '08 crash happened. Things just continued. She was an incredible mother. Beyond her means, though, could not deal with things. The public school system couldn't substitute everything that our needs were, and neither could all the other subsidies. So my goal was to take the burden off my mother, was to apply to private schools. So going through that process, I was definitely the only one that I knew that that was ever the case, and making that appeal to schools that going to a boarding school would give me stability and would give my mother a chance to better, give my younger siblings a better life for them. It became my lifelong journey to become self-sustaining at the age of 14 through education. And so to this day, I'm, I'm almost 30, education is one of the things that I'm most passionate about. I work with a group called the Debt Collective, and 10 years ago, we started the movement for student debt cancellation, and it all ties into access to education. The biggest issue with education is it's been flawed. So do we want to support public education? Absolutely. Is there flaws in the system already? Yes. Do we need more funding? Yes. Does that increasing in funding include things that aren't currently even being covered? Absolutely. And this is one of those things. And it's not your, like, job to sit there and investigate why a family chooses to either go to a private school, which are not all high-income families, and, or, or homeschool. I mean, there's just no reason. We don't go around, if I went around and asked, why did you get your vaccine or not, you would say that's inappropriate. So keep it to yourself, and just, you know, let people make the choices they make. But at the end of the day, you can criticize the parent's choice. It's the child that you're funding, and it's the same thing, where no child deserves to be punished for something that their parents are doing or anything. They're a child. So regardless of their age, give them the funding, regardless of the situation, and if, in general, public education needs more funding, I agree with that. Like, that's it. We need more funding. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Anybody who hasn't spoken? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Ginny Hewitt, Harwich Center. I have the opposite story of this young lady. I was a single mother with three children. I believe in the fundamental right to equality public education regardless of income. This proposal would reduce the funding to public schools, so I ask you to oppose it and vote it down. If you have concerns about the curriculum or policies or conditions in the public schools, then get involved. We have a school committee. We have a school councils. We have, you know, contact the administrators or the teachers. If you are concerned about schools in Harwich, then I have to tell you, you're really not aware of what many of the schoolchildren in the Commonwealth, the conditions of the schools they go to school in. When I moved here, my son was in second grade in a class of 36 children in Taunton, moved here to a class of 18. I felt like I got a quality, I mean, a private school education for my children. It made a tremendous difference in their lives, and I just, I'd hate to see anything detract from our public education. If you can afford to homeschool or to go to a private school, that's great. But I have two children that had special needs, and they got all the help they needed here. As one of the speakers mentioned, that's definitely more expensive. And, and public education is a public good and a public right, and please support that. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Yes, ma'am.
Nancy Curtis from East Harwich. I'm not going to go back over all of this.
Yeah, try and touch on new points if we can, because we've spent a long time on this article.
I just wanted to question, the article as written, to my mind, reads that the town would be telling the Board of Selectmen that we are in favor of including accredited homeschool participants in private schools in funding, in school choice funding. And I think earlier it was said that that wasn't what it was saying, but you'd be putting Harwich's name on this. You're going to send something to the state that says, the town of Harwich wants you to allow school choice funding at all these levels, homeschool, private, parochial. And my concern about that, and I had a child who was in one of the best school systems in Connecticut. It didn't work. It worked great for one of my kids and not for the other. We had to put him in private school. We paid for it. But there are fixed costs to supporting public schools. And I don't know how many people know this, but public schools were not a guaranteed right in this country and nationwide until the late 60s and early 70s. And I don't want to lose that for the children who don't have those other options available to them. We need to have a public school. We need a building. We need the teachers. If you take 40 kids out, they're not all going to be in the same grade. You're still going to have to have the same teachers. So I'm a big supporter of public schools, and I always support funding it, but I can't support this article. And I would question how this article is written to make sure we understand what it's asking us to say. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Mr. Houston?
Many of us in this room remember back in the early 90s, when ed reform on the state level, even preceding the later federal legislation, was adopted, which first created school choice and charter schools. And I'm looking around the room at many people who, in addition to Mr. Waystack, haven't missed town meetings for many of the years since then. And you know what we've gone through in wrestling with the financial implications of what school choice and what charter schools did. We can debate the purposes of having those public options available, public options available. But we, the veterans of this town meeting and the leadership of this town, know what the financial implications were and the struggles that we spent decades struggling with. Because as the previous speaker said, sending the money with the person doesn't cover the fixed costs. And this article, which extends that financial complication even further, is something that would undermine public schools. Massachusetts has been number one in public schools from Boston Latin in 1635 to Horace Mann in the 1800s, all the way up through the ed reform of the 21st century. So please vote opposed to this article. Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Yes, sir.
Gary Conroy, East Harwich. I think we need to look outside of Harwich a little and understand education and... I think we need to look outside of Harwich a little and understand education and what the failures are. Charlie Baker, a few years ago, was trying to get more charter schools authorized in the state. Why was he doing that? Because so many of our public school systems are failing the students. People talk about equity today, and if you go to the inner school systems in Boston, so many of those schools have been failing for decades. These kids don't have a way out, and they need more options, and there's got to be more competition and innovation in our education system. We're blessed and lucky to have a great school system. This doesn't mean it's going to, we want to destroy the Harwich-Montemoy School District. We can do both, and many communities need more choices than what they have today, and it's also a way to equalize educational opportunities across the rich, the poor, the black, the white, et cetera. We need this to go forward and the debate to go forward to Boston. Thank you.
Further debate. This gentleman here.
Elskuska Sixteberiav. Of all the articles, fifty-eight articles on the warrant, this is a non-binding article that causes me the most anxiety over which way to go on it. The reason for that is, is because if it were to be carried out and followed through to fruition, it would impact our local school budget, because it would expand the use of school choice funds, which are taken out of our local school budget. As a public school educator for thirty-four years, prior to retirement, twenty-four, as a school principal, I came to appreciate the value and importance of the local school budget. It's probably one of the most important factors in dealing with what the educators in the community are able to do, is the resources that we give them, the conditions we give them to work under. When this school choice funding mechanism was put in place back in Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, I lobbied very hard with my local representative at the time, my state senator at the time begged them not to include charter school funding in the proposal to be taken out of the local school budget funding. If you're going to expand choice, do it in a way that you find another funding mechanism, not a mechanism that penalizes the local school budget. At the same time, I speak as a person who, as a parent, sent my two children to parochial schools for the singular reason that I did not believe that my local public school, and this was prior to the days of school choice, would have provided my children with an adequate education, an education that would have been acceptable to my wife and myself. And the school that I opted not to send them to was the school that my wife attended right through eighth grade. But things change in schools, and in every, I can share with you as a veteran educator, that not every school is the same. Not every school, public school, provides the same quality, the same conditions, the same resources. A lot of that has to do with the leadership. So we had the opportunity, when our first child started school, to select from two schools. Both were an equal walking distance from our home, and we were on the border of those two schools. We opted for the first. We sent their daughter there, but the school was closed down after kindergarten year, so we were forced back to one choice only, and that choice was not good. So we paid, and happily, we paid, I don't say happily, tuition on top of our taxes to educate our two daughters right through the twelfth grade. So I can understand those who have brought forth this warrant article and the thinking and the argumentation that goes into the importance of families having choice. Schools provide, next to families, schools probably are the service that have the most important impact on every one of our lives and the life outcomes of all of us. And I could say that for a couple of reasons. One is that perhaps the statistic most related to life outcomes is your ability to read at grade level at third grade. That's a nationally utilized statistic that's used to project a lot of future outcomes. Some states use it to project their prison bed needs for their state, and people look to the schools to provide that, and it has everything to do with your total life outcome for the majority of people. Second, schools are the one service in the community that we take our children at a very formative age, send them out, and put them into the hands of other people for the majority of a hundred and eighty days of the year, in loco parentis, in hopes that they will instill, reinforce the values, the character, personality qualities that we want and expect in our children. So it's very important that people have an option if they don't feel that that's happening. What I would like to see, the problem with this amendment is that it doesn't change the way the schools, the way the state funds the school, the public schools, and then expands choice. And I'd love, I'm going to vote against this, because we have a school budget that's struggling in the town of Harwich to fund an excellent school system. I would send my children to the schools in Montemoy, and I would not have sent my children to the schools in the first school. I was a principal. I was school counselor there, and I wouldn't send my kids there because they were not teaching respect and responsibility. I reluctantly became principal of that school to change that school around, change the culture. When I moved to Harwich in two thousand fifteen and began to get involved in the schools, it's like night and day differences some other people have attested to. What we have here is something that educators throughout the state would give their right arm to be able to participate in, and a lot of that is to do, the resources that, as a community, we have provided. This, if this were to go all the way, and it's not binding, and as some people say, it's going to die, it would die in the legislature, and we're the first, we would be the first town to propose it, so it's not a statewide mandate, it would impact the local school budget. I would like to see this come back in a future year. I'm all for choice. I'm all for individual choice, but I'd like to see it come back, asking our legislature to change the way they fund schools in Massachusetts, to continue improving the public school funding, which I lobbied for for years, and are only in process of changing the funding formula so that we don't have to pay as many local tax dollars and are funded by the state more. And we need to do that, and if we're going to expand choices, I think we should, because of the reasons of people who are favoring that, then the legislature should fund that choice from a different mechanism than taking it out of the local school budget, which most people have to rely and depend on to fund the schools. So I will vote against this, but I will not, if it passed, I wouldn't be upset, and I'd love to see it come back in the future, but asking the legislature to change the way they fund the schools, not to, as a key component. Thank you.
Any further debate? Have you spoken before, sir? All right, go ahead.
Simon Evans, East Harwich. Just very, very quickly, two things. First of all, certainly, from a personal point of view, I've been coming to town meetings about ten years. We always have spirited debate on the school budget, as we should, and the idea that we're passing a recommendation that's effectively a defund initiative is not smart, in my opinion. Secondly, this is a matter for the regional school system. We have an appropriate body for that, which is the Montemoy School Committee. It is not the town, and I would suggest for those people that want to advance this, they should be taking it to the school committee for discussion and not the town meeting, because the actual schools are run through a regional body. Thank you.
Looks like we're ready for a vote. You've spoken before, haven't you, ma'am?
Yes, I have, but not as long as many of the other speakers. And so I've been...
All right, I'm going to give you a couple of minutes. Go ahead.
I don't even need a couple of minutes. First of all, I just want to make sure that people understand, we are not voting to take away choice. Everyone in this room who is an adult, who has a child, can make a choice about where they would like their child to be educated. Public schools allow those children to go because of the funding of our tax dollars. For private school or for homeschooling, there are costs that are associated with those, that those individuals who have children must bear. We don't ask to fund people in their private homes, and many people gave those examples. But what I most want to speak with is something we haven't mentioned tonight. The people who are proponents of this amendment, of this article, are saying that your vote does not matter. It's simply something to advance it to the next level. By all means, your voice does matter, and your vote does matter. What it does is it's a reflection of the values in our town, and I, for one, do not want Harwich to be on the map as the person who said we'd like to defund public education. So remember, you're voting not just for something to be advanced, but you're voting with your heart about what our future is for our town. Thank you.
Sir, you're new to the debate. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm Herb Raphael, Harwich Port. You asked for new things that hadn't been brought up before, so I, sorry to keep you a little longer on this point, but something that hasn't been brought up. We've talked a lot about choice. We've talked a lot about the budget, but what we haven't talked about is the impact of what choice does to the public schools. I was in the National Teacher Corps, teaching underprivileged kids in Gary, Indiana in the nineteen seventies. I had a tenth-grade student with a second-grade reading level, and he passed every year because they wanted to flush him through the system. So I know something about schools that don't work. But why do schools not work? The school system where I was didn't work, not because of the budget. There was a lot of federal funds went into that budget, and the school had money. It didn't work because it didn't have enough parents that cared. It's about parents that care, and that's what we have here in Harwich, and that's what we have here in Massachusetts, and that's why our systems are so good. Well, when you take the parents that care, and you say, gee, we're not only going to give you a choice, but we're going to give you money to teach your kids at home, you're taking parents that care out of caring about the public school system and caring more about alternative education, which sounds wonderful if it had no impact on the public school system. But inevitably, when you take people that care about their kids and homeschool them, there is no way they're going to care as much about the budget or the quality of the education in the public school system. And what is the outcome of that over time? The outcome of that not caring by the parents that really care about their kids is a declining public school system. And so I suggest we vote no for this article.
Thank you. It looks like we're ready for a vote. So we're on Article fifty-three, and the motion on the article is that it be accepted and adopted as printed. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion does not carry. Article fifty-four. See if the town will vote to prohibit hunting in the Bell's Neck Conservation Area. The properties included in the prohibition would be as follows. All the parcels under the care and custody of the Harwich Conservation Commission. They comprise approximately two hundred and seventy-two acres, and I'm not going to read all the parcel numbers, but they are listed in your warrant. Do I have a positive motion on this article? Second row? Sorry? Yes. You're going to bring in a positive motion? You're going to make a positive motion? Okay, could you go to the microphone? So the motion is to accept and adopt the article as printed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do I hear a second? And can I just get your name?
My name is Carol Kousha Stone. I'm the one that is putting this motion forward.
Okay, so you're the petitioner.
Yes.
Thank you. You're recognized in debate.
And I've lived in Harwich for forty-eight years. My husband was on the Trails Committee for Bell's Neck for eleven years. After a quadruple bypass, he was told to walk every day. He hated walking, but if we bought a yellow lab puppy, he promised he'd walk every day, and he did, to Bell's Neck. That was two thousand and eight. When he got tired, there were no benches, so he built three benches, all with incredible views, so that he and others could appreciate the scenery. Bell's Neck is incredibly beautiful. He took numerous pictures of the marshes, the trails, and the wildlife that lived there. He walked the trails in winter, as well as in the spring, summer, and fall with his dog, Play-Doh. He would let the conservation department know when trees were blocking the path and help the AmeriCorps people in cutting them down. He also got really upset when hunters would kill the deer, skin them, and leave the dead animals' remains. That's when he and I tried to outlaw hunting in Bell's Neck in two thousand and fifteen. We lost by nine votes. I lost my husband this past June. I decided to again try to outlaw hunting in his memory. Bell's Neck has become more popular than ever. This past Sunday was exceptionally busy. Locals and tourists enjoy the walking trails, the bike trails, and the beautiful terrain. Please help to keep Bell's Neck safe. Safety is the most important tenet of this discussion, the safety of those that use and enjoy Bell's Neck. There are other places to hunt in Harwich: the Robins Pond Conservation Area, Island Pond, the Town Forest, Hawks Nest, and the area behind the Community Garden. Please vote to outlaw hunting in Bell's Neck and to keep those that use it safe. Thank you.
Further debate. This gentleman over here.
Sebastian Mudry. I live on Smith Street. My property abuts Bell's Neck. My bedroom is on the second floor of a hundred-plus-year-old Cape. Needs a lot of work to maintain, and I have a direct sound, sir, from your guns. Yes, because I saw you making comments.
Sir, we're not going to direct comments at individuals here. We're going to speak to the meeting.
Okay, I'm going to direct it to the sound that I hear during hunting series. Bam. 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 And I am restraining my voice. It wakes me up at dawn or before dawn for two months. I strongly support Article fifty-four. A hunter can now fire a shotgun, a rifle, five hundred feet from home, from my home. A twelve-gauge deer slug travels three hundred to four hundred yards and can penetrate three-quarter-inch plywood at that distance. It's lethal. A center-fire rifle travels for miles. I believe in the right to bear arms. I wear earplugs and headgear to muffle at Cape Cod, gun works at the range when I go to fire. I've got a sportsman's license, and I won't hunt in my backyard. I practice what I preach. I do, I say. And I've seen a change over the years. At the end of Smith Street, North Road, there is a bend in the Hurring River, and I always saw dozens, pairs of buffalo heads. This season, I've looked and I've seen none, to one time, I saw two mated pairs, four. Years passed, dozens, and this is not just a personal observation. Migratory birds and waterfowl are in trouble in the northeast. Ask Audubon. Brewster saved the eight hundred and thirty-five-acre Punkhorn Parklands as an ecological treasure. I looked it up here. It's right on my phone, and I'm not going to read through, but they laud what they have saved. They've made it free of hunting, eight hundred and thirty-five acres, safe for hikers, birders, bicyclists like me, dog walkers, and wildlife. And we, in Harwich, need the wisdom to do the same for the two hundred and seventy-two-acre Bell's Neck Conservation Area. Please hear me. I am so proud of our town, you, me. Pass Article thirty-seven. Please pass Article fifty-four. Thank you.
Further debate. Yes, sir, Mr. Ruthier.
Yes, Darrell Ruthier from South Harwich. First of all, there's major issues within over... First of all, there's major issues with an overabundant deer population. They're actually trying to address that in the Punkhorn right now. And there's two articles going to town meeting in Brewster. One is to promote tree stand archery hunting. And the other one is to ban hunting altogether. A safe deer population is somewhere between 16 and 18 deer per square mile, which is pretty much what Harwich is at right now. The Punkhorn is in excess of 30. One of the major concerns is chronic wasting disease, which fortunately has not been found in Massachusetts, but it won't be long when the population gets that high. And that's a horrible prion disease that basically, it's in the same family as mad cow. So the deer wander around shaky. They'll approach you. They look almost like they have the mange. They lose a lot of weight. They die a horrible death. And there's also a huge environmental impact on overdeer population. They outcompete many of the other species, rabbits, any ground birds, any birds that nest in bushes. The forage line rises. They destroy the foliage. Lot of ground birds nest in the bushes. And they can't do that if there aren't any bushes left. Deer are very innovative. They can eat just about anything. I have a place up in Maine that's covered with snow most of the winter, and they'll resort to eating cedar bark. Tick-borne illness. You want to be healthy and safe? Well, Lyme disease is not fun. I've had it three times. It's going to drastically increase the amount of deer ticks in the woods. That's why they're called deer ticks, because they live on deer. Coyotes have become a problem on the Cape. And you know, there's almost a night doesn't go by where I don't hear dozens of them howling behind my house. That population is going to explode if the deer population gets out of control. Car and deer accidents. There's going to be a lot more collisions on the road. It's been proven, scientifically proven, that proper deer hunting management in Massachusetts does a great job, promotes the health of the herd. There's 1,000 acres of conservation land approximately in the town of Harwich. Over 600 of that is in Conservation Trust, which is already not huntable. We lost another 80 last night to the meeting. This is another 272. We still have watershed land for now, but Orleans has taken liberty after 2001 and closed down their watershed land to hunting. So basically, if we're going to pinpoint certain areas where we are allowed to hunt, we're not going to be able to manage the deer population. And the environmental impact is going to be substantial. There's 14 areas in Harwich that have maintained walking trails by the Harwich Conservation Trust. There's only a four-week gun season. There's no rifle season, by the way, sir. You can't hunt with a rifle in the state of Massachusetts. So I don't know where you got the rifles going off from. And a shotgun slug is not going to go 300 yards, especially when you shoot in a straight line off the ground. And it sure as heck isn't going to penetrate 3/4-inch plywood at that distance. You're looking at 150, 200 yards maximum. Black powder season is two weeks. It's a two weeks following shotgun season. Very few people participate in that because it's extremely challenging. You have one shot. And I think things have changed. There's a lot less hunters in the woods than there used to be. And one of the main things that I wanted to get to, too, is the revenues with hunting equipment. The Pittman-Robinson Act, which was instituted in 1937, in the period between 2016 and 2020, generated $718 million that goes to conservation nationwide. That's unbelievable. That's a lot of revenue. It's also going to increase the hunter concentration in the other areas that are dwindling down smaller and smaller and smaller that we are going to be able to hunt. If this passes, we're going to have less than 200 acres of conservation land that we can hunt. And you have to remember, you have to be 150 feet from a road, 500 feet from a dwelling, and 300 feet from an unoccupied dwelling. So that makes a 200-acre parcel of land really small. And I know none of you have probably really thought of this, but maybe it'll make sense to you when I mention it. What do you think the natural death of a deer is? Do you think a little fairy comes down from the sky and carries them home? Think about that for a minute. You're a wild animal living in a wild environment. You slowly diminish, get malnourished. Deer typically die because their teeth wear out. And they have to forage on acorns and really hard things. Their teeth wear out. Bucks a little quicker because they eat a lot more. Does in Massachusetts can live up to 20 years, which are some of the oldest deer in the country. The bucks will make eight, nine if they're lucky, but they usually don't make it that far. So imagine if you're a deer that is starving to death, that can barely walk, and you've got coyotes following you. You got crows in the trees looking down on you. You got turkey vultures circling. I think I'd rather take a quick, painless death that's going to provide a meal for a family than get picked apart by predators, normally while they're still alive. The other thing is in regards to finding scun deer in the woods. I've never in my life heard of, and I've been hunting for almost 40 years, I've never in my life ever heard of somebody skinning a deer after they shoot it. How are you going to get it out of the woods? Are you going to drag the meat on the ground and pressure wash it when you get home? It's going to have bark and pine needles and sand? That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life. What she saw was a coyote kill. She didn't see what was left behind from a deer hunter. We got the deer. We take the guts out. More times than not, I leave my knife in the gut pile. So I go back the next day because my beautiful wife bought me a bright orange knife, hunter orange, so I can see it in the dark. You go back the next day and the entire gut pile is gone, completely gone. So I don't know about, you know, maybe somebody dumped a deer carcass in the woods. I don't know. But that doesn't make any sense to me. So basically, with 200 acres of conservation land, it's not going to stop here and hunting's going to be banned. But that's okay because Mother Nature will take care of it and produce some nasty disease that'll take them all out, and we won't have to worry about this problem. Family traditions. One of the speakers of the conservation meeting that I spoke at about a month ago was talking about, there's pictures in Brooks Academy of Babe Ruth hunting in Bell's Neck. This has been going on forever. And the deer population in the United States right now, and you can Google this, is the highest it's been since 1932. And as a matter of fact, one of the reasons for that is the monetary names, the word buck and the word doe. Okay, you know how they, they're synonymous with money? Do you know what the reason for that is? Because you used to get a buck for a deer hide prior to 1932, before they legalized and organized hunting and hired environmental management officers to regulate it. And as far as the sea ducks go, the organizations that govern this body, they keep very, very close count on not only duck populations, deer populations, migratory birds, everything. And they're the first people to limit the numbers. I've gotten a doe permit, I think, 14 out of the last 15 years. So that tells you that Massachusetts is doing heck of a job managing the deer population. And it's not going to take long. Deer have one to three offspring a year. You ban hunting, there'll be five times as many deer in a 10-year period, and that's going to be detrimental to the environment. Thank you.
Further debate. Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Abdow. And in 45 years of being down on Cape Cod, I have never once hunted in this area. So the gentleman who came up behind and said I did is full of shit.
Sir, we're not going to have, no.
Sorry. I apologize.
No, that's it. I'm going on to somebody else. I don't allow that kind of language at town meetings.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Sandy McClarty. I don't own a gun and I don't hunt. But as I listen to the debate, the first thing that comes to mind is hunting is, you could say, almost prehistoric. It's something we've been doing for a long time. And I don't see the hunting as the big problem. We kind of evolved with it. It's hard to make a case that it's detrimental. In fact, you could say it was necessary for our survival. What is, I think, detrimental is all these McMansions plowing through the woods. I'm sorry, that's the elephant in the room. That is why we're losing habitat. That is why we're losing water quality. That is why we're, you know, putting vernal pools at risk. And so, you know, oftentimes, these arguments, they'll say, okay, well, the cranberry bogs are causing nitrogen problems, or the hunting is, you know, depleting this or that. I kind of see it as, you know, this is what it is to be human, is to survive. People are, I have friends that hunt that that is how they get their food for their family. They have big freezers. They put it in there. And my experience is a lot of hunters are connected to the land and have a deep passion and a love for the land that they hunt in. I feel what's happening to our society is we're losing those connections to the land, and that's what's destroying us. Thank you.
This lady over here.
I appreciate why this was originally brought before the town, because deer are cute and animals are cute. And we have to remember that we eat them. And this is fresh, local protein. To buy fresh protein at the store that is organic is very, very expensive. And it's getting more expensive all the time. My grocery budget, I track it every single month. I know how much I spend. I supplement my grocery budget with meat that I get from my dad and his friends who are hunters. I appreciate it as a mom that I can give my kids fresh, local meat that is not full of pesticides and who knows what else, because that's what we get at the grocery store if we're not buying organic. I think that it's very important that we continue our heritage of hunting in Harwich. I grew up in Chatham, but I have ancestors in Chatham and Harwich. I hope Alan Hall, whose family gave Bell's Neck to the town, will stand up and talk about the history of that land and the area because, is he here?
He didn't give it to me.
Oh. Alan, I'm so glad to see you. Thank you. Okay, well, I would like all of us to consider the history of the land, the history of how we all got here, and the fact that the hunted food that comes from that land is spread through many, many people. I don't get the whole thing. I get pieces of it. My dad does. My whole family does. People in the community do. My parents make food for older people that no longer go out and hunt for themselves. And even if it's just burger, or if it's just some steaks, it is still feeding many, many people with locally sourced protein. And we can't keep cutting off our hunting resources locally. Fish is fantastic, but I also like some red meat as well. Thank you.
Further debate. This gentleman over here.
Excuse me. It's dry in here. My name's John Evil. I'm on Chatham Road. I want to talk about safety. I think that's important, obviously, it's important to the petitioner, it's important to us all. And my understanding, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, is that any firearms, hunting-related firearms injury needs to be reported to the Department of Public Safety of Harwich and also to the Mass Fish and Wildlife Enforcement Division. So my question to the select board or the Conservation Commission is, how many hunter-related firearms injuries have occurred on Bell's Neck in the last 25 years?
Mr. McCaskill.
Zero.
Zero. How about in the last 50 years?
Zero that there's any records of.
Thank you. So there have been no hunter-related firearms injuries on Bell's Neck in the recorded history of Harwich? And here we are discussing hunting safety. It's clear to me that hunters have a perfect safety record with regards to Bell's Neck and as far as I've been able to tell through my research in Harwich, in its entirety. I don't think safety is an issue. I know safety is not an issue. May 9, 2014 study, Department of Orthopedic Surgery, Indiana University, peer-reviewed and published in the National Library of Medicine. Nine firearms-related injuries per 1 million hunter days. 1 million hunter days. Peer-reviewed study by an independent organization dealing in trauma. 0.6% of those accidents were fatal. 98% of those accidents were self-inflicted or hunter-on-hunter accidents. We have more danger from being hit by a satellite tonight than you have in hunting in Bell's Wildlife impacts. Hunter's negative impact on Bell's Neck's conservation management goals. Could somebody in the Conservation Commission address from a study the negative impact hunters have had on wildlife management goals in the Bell's Neck Conservation Area since March of 2011 after the purchases were completed? Is there a study? Yeah, great. Thank you.
The conservation agent, do you want to address that, Amy?
I'll just add that there is no study of the impacts to wildlife habitat from hunting.
There is no study that's been done.
There is no study. So I have in my hand, and the Conservation Commission may be familiar with it, a 2012 study that was commissioned by the Conservation Commission, a study done by BCS Group, a very well-regarded, highly respected environmental group that is often contracted by the state with on coastal management problems and challenges. I'll just read very quickly. Bell's Neck has many different access points and land uses. I don't know who else is familiar with this document. It's available online. I'm sure the Conservation Commission is familiar with it, or they should be. The land is used by, interesting order here. The land is used by hunters, fishermen, walkers, hikers, bike riders, wildlife observers, artists, people using metal detectors, a cranberry operation, blue shell crab fishing, herring observers, boy scouts, classroom field trips, canoe, and kayakers, et cetera. So it's definitely a multi-use environment. I frankly am amazed. However, the plan contains a four-page extensive list of flora and fauna that was identified in Bell's Neck by the organization. And in summary, it's 20 pages, in summary, and you're welcome to read this and correct me if I'm wrong. The study identified threats to Bell's Neck Conservation Area that include erosion from proliferation of trails, spur trails, and private watercraft launching, invasive species, human activity and encroachment on the herring run, which was the primary reason for buying the land in the first place, drawing of aquatic fauna into the pumps used in cranberry operations, and that's not, I'm not poking anything at the cranberry operators, you got your own problems, nitrogen loading from septic and fertilizer runoff of the thousands of homes that are in the Herring River watershed. Climate change impacts on flora. Nowhere in this document is there a statement or reference to negative impacts or conflicts of hunting being done pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth on the land, the flora, or the fauna. No impacts. We paid for the study. No impacts. Okay. Do we have any data on land use trends on Bell's Neck?
Sir, sir, I'm just going to interrupt you for a minute. You have about two minutes left.
Okay, do we have any data on land use trends in the Bell's Neck area over the past five years, pre and post pandemic? Because what I've heard tonight is that, in fact, we're seeing an increase in usage. My own experience, and I walk on these lands every day, both in Thompson's Field and elsewhere. We have a lot of out-of-towners that are using these conservation areas as dog parks. They are dog parks. I have been told by people in no uncertain terms, people from Chatham, I know we're all shocked. I know we're shocked by that. But people from Chatham, that it's not a conservation area, it's a dog park. And I should expect to be nipped by dogs when I'm in Thompson's Field. I should be, expect to be. I should be, expect to be confronted by people and threatened with battery because I kicked their dog because it was attacking me, also from Chatham. And the other day, very nice woman, had a big retriever, she was from Comocuit. I was like, "Comocuit? Why did you come from Comocuit?" "Well, it's very nice here and I can run, I don't need a leash on my dog," which is not true. Dog parks, this is what we're creating in this town, dog parks at our expense for other people. And when they say that the use is increasing of these areas, it's not necessarily by people and taxpayers of Harwich, it is by people from outside of town. God forbid, Brewster, that used to be part of Harwich, yeah, they send their people over here to use our conservation lands to exercise their dogs. That is what's going on here. And I, as a hunter, am being pushed out of these areas because supposedly they're getting used by more and more people. Well, the people aren't from Harwich, and I'm a taxpayer. There's something wrong with this, there's something upside down with this. And so I am voting no.
Further debate, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. I don't have anything prepared, I'm just going to speak from the heart and from knowledge and history in this town. My family was the first settlers here in North Howard, up on the Heron River in the early 1600s, before it was incorporated. I'm sure they lived off the land to survive, to get to where we are today. Fast forward, listen to all the debates, listen to this opportunity here that we have as a town meeting. I have a collection at home where the town reports start off about this thin and were about this thick now. And I've got every year that my grandfather gave to me. My grandfather also gave to me, when he passed, through his estate, I got his Belgian shotgun, Browning Belgian shotgun, which I am very proud to own. My grandfather is John Emmerich Hall, who died in '06. He was a cranberry grower, born and raised in North Howard, his father, grandfathers, all the way back. Howard has changed, the country's changed, but we talk about getting involved. I got involved, I'm on the Conservation Commission. They talk about land stewards. My ancestors were land stewards. I'm a steward now for my two sons. We can't take away what we have all the time. The Bell's Neck reservoir area, the whole area was put together by a gentleman named Marcus El Yorin, who's the founder of Ocean Spray. Started right here on Cape Cod, 1929. He backed up the Heron River to make that reservoir for all the cranberry bogs. Land stewards, cranberry farmers, locals, the railroad tracks pass through there, Old Colony Railroad, North Howard's Depot, the Screen House, all those men and women that worked there, that was our community. We still have a community. Some of the things are gone. We've naturalized cranberry bogs, which I'm totally against. That's my roots. The Hall started cranberry cultivation in Dennis in 1816. We keep taking things away. I respect everybody's opinion, and I know the world is changing, but I live right next to this area. My grandfather owned it 1957 to 1962. He sold it to a gentleman named Ralph Geider, the whole Bell's Neck area. That was the first purchase of conservation land for this town. That was the start of all this land. My grandfather hunted there, Marshall Seaberman, old timers that we all look back on and have fond memories and respect. I can't stand here and allow something else to go away. That's why I'm here, I'm involved. I have to protect my son's future as my grandfathers did for me. We need to just think about those things for a little bit. Mr. Geider threatened the town of Howard, he was quite a developer, and he, not threaten, I shouldn't use that word, but he proposed that he was going to put a subdivision in there of almost 400, 500 home homes, and that's why the town bought it. Later years, the town has bought other adjacent parcels collectively to make that all work. I've lived there, grown up on Depot Street my entire life. I've never had any issues. I've hunted there with schoolteachers, Mr. Burns. I've had great times with these folks. I even brought my gun to school in 1987 in the car and left it there, and all the teachers came outside to look at it, ask how things have changed. Do that today. What's wrong with that? We're fearing everything, and we shouldn't, okay? There's rules, there's laws, but we don't need to keep taking good laws away in rights. And as I said, I'm speaking from the heart. 2015, this was on the town meeting floor, they can vote it down from what Mrs. Stone said by nine votes, I believe. That same year, for many years before, my family was in negotiations with the town to buy the last four acres of waterfront on the reservoir. It took almost 15 years to accomplish. My grandfather didn't want to sell it to the town because he knows how things go. However, he passed. In my father's living room, my father's ill at home with multiple sclerosis, Attorney Croll came to our house in the dark, because it was during a winter storm, there was no power. My father signed the deed by candlelight, and the topic was about hunting and non-hunting. Even though we didn't have anything written in any purchase and sales agreement, my father says, "I hope this is, that there'll always be hunting there." Mr. Croll, he can attest to that. Furthermore, our land was part of it, we've got 22 acres left, it's land-corded. We had rights on all those cop paths, Bell's Neck Road, I could come in from North Street, Bell's Neck Road, to get to my property through the ancient cop pass. As good people, good stewards, we relinquished those rights and gave them to the town, and that's what Amy was speaking of. I donated them to the town so that we wouldn't have a bulldozer coming through the woods. We do the right thing. I hope everybody else does the right thing. Thank you very much.
I'll be back to you in just a minute, I've got somebody new over here. Yes, sir.
Herb Raphael, Harwich Port. Certainly traditions are a big part of Cape Cod, it's a big, Cape Cod's a big part of the country's tradition with the pilgrims. But there are good traditions, and there are not such good traditions. Hunting is one of those that, there are some certain questions about. In fact, if you actually look at hunting in this country, of the nine species of birds that are extinct in the United States, five of them are extinct as a result of overhunting. One, the passenger pigeon, the most abundant bird in the world, would be here right now if it wasn't obliterated by being slaughtered. That said, we had the tradition of whaling. Had we had this discussion 100 years ago, we would all be supporting whaling. I expect most of us would not support it today. So there are some traditions we have to look at with certain askance. If you look at other cultures where hunting isn't as popular, or it might not exist like it does here, like a country like India, do you know how many extinct birds there are in India in the past 5,000 years of their tradition? One. One species is extinct in India, we have nine. So the issue of tradition, it was a tradition in this country, it's a tradition that's fading, it does not mean it has to exist forever. As far as the argument about controlling deer and managing deer and the suggestion that they're the greatest threat to the environment here on Cape Cod, I think we're the greatest threat to the environment here on Cape Cod, it is not the deer. And had we not eliminated all the predators here, deer would not be an issue at all. Just to give you a sense of perspective, predators are still a nuisance in Massachusetts. The law in Massachusetts for regulating wildlife is a pretty obsolete law. If we were in India, and believe me, I'm not Indian, and I don't know that much about their culture, but when India had the population that the United States has today, 330 million people, it had 100,000 tigers roaming around that country, which is one-third the size of the United States. Those were predators that maintained other animals in check. We humans wiped out every predator in this country of any significance, and so we want to serve as the predators. And that is not a very good ecological remedy. So I won't go into much detail about these things, but the bottom line is, referring now to Bell's Neck, I was at Bell's Neck this morning. There were five sandhill cranes there. They'd been there since yesterday. You think that's funny? It's not funny. Sandhill cranes are a very rare bird in the state of Massachusetts, it's unusual for them to pass through here. Every bird watcher wants to see them here. And I can guarantee you, if it were hunting season, those birds would have been flushed and disturbed, and would be long gone. And fortunately, because it is not hunting season, all those people that were referred to before that enjoy Bell's Neck in a passive way rather than one that causes huge noise and disturbs every animal in the entire area, those sandhill cranes could stay here for several days and many hundreds of people might enjoy them. So it isn't just about deer management or tradition and things like that, it's that the animals, which have no voice in this discussion here, they're tremendously hunting versus all the other uses at Bell's Neck, is something that disturbs all the animals, not to mention the people that live there and the people that want to enjoy it. So we need to look at these other perspectives and not just the tradition of hunting in Harwich.
Any further debate? Anybody else new that wants to speak? This lady over here.
I'm not prepared for this, I wasn't planning on speaking. Jennifer Ramler, Harwich Center. I'm originally from Western New York, hunting family, big open spaces, and I've been on Cape Cod for over 20 years, never really thought about hunting here, but I happen to be the mother of four boys, and hunting has become part of our family. And when my children decided that they wanted to start hunting, they had to take a firearm safety course, a hunter safety course, they had to practice, they had to learn the rules, they had to learn the regulations. They are very respectful, after they go hunting, they come home, they learn how to clean a gun, how to take everything apart, things get locked up, things are safe. And my understanding of this warrant is this is a safety issue. And has been said before that there has never been a hunting accident, there has never been a gun-related issue of hunting on Bell's Neck. It is something that is very important to our family. The children, I say children, they're teenagers, young men, are able to go with their friends, they, everything that they shoot, we eat, we clean, it is our dinner. I have a family of six. We are not fortunate enough to do deer hunting here, but for us, it's the water fowl, which I know is mostly of what is going on in Bell's Neck. But hunting is something important ecologically as well. I don't know if any of you know about the duck permit, but if you had duck stamp, duck stamp is one of the largest revenues for conservation land. You can actually go to the post office and buy a duck stamp even if you're not a hunter, and that donates money towards conservation. So hunters are not just out there killing animals. They are respectful, they are knowledgeable, they are following the rules, they are following the regulations, they are some of the most well-respected and respectful people that I know. Many of the other hunters in this town, they can go out 16, 17 years old, I don't worry about them, I know that they're being safe, again, because they're following the rules. They are being safe. They have an app on their phone that they make sure that where they are, they are not near 500 feet of a residence, 150, I don't know all the rules, they know that much better than I do. But my point is, is that if you buy a house that is next to a piece of land that allows hunting, the hunting was there before you. And that is not the hunter's fault that they're, it is, but the shooting, but my point is, it was there first. And it's part of living next to an area where hunting is. And I know it's early in the morning, I know it's loud, it's a very, very short season. Sometimes I equate it to, you know, you can't walk your dog on the beach from Memorial Day to Labor Day, that's part of living in this town, that's part of enjoying your beach. Hunting is a very short season, and for those couple months, you may have to hear some gunshots in the morning. It's not a bam 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 bam. If you've ever been hunting for a bird or a deer, it's one shot. They're not semi-automatic weapons, they're not, you know, sitting there with rifles. It's not willy-nilly, it's very thoughtful and precise in their, you know, as I said, you know, it's, it, sorry, I wasn't planning this, it feeds our family, it's, and it's something that they, that they love doing, and I hope that we don't take Bell's Neck away from these kids. They're young, they're respectful, they're trying to learn how to take care of their families for the future.
Further debate, you haven't spoken, sir.
Yeah, Ms. Stone can go ahead of me, if that's all right.
We'll hear from somebody new, and then I'll go back to Ms. Stone.
Okay. My name is Len Greiner, I live in Harwich. I washed up on the beach here in 1986. I was lucky enough to go to Mass Maritime, and I went to sea for 23 years. We've got five kids we raised in Harwich. I hit the ball out of the park finding Harwich, I love Harwich. My dad took me duck hunting when I was five, and he created a conservationist because the funding for water fowl has not come primarily from the taxpayers. Back in 1934, the government set up a federal duck stamp. When they first offered it, it was $1. And the reason why they did it was because of the industrial age, marshes and wetlands were being devastated. Farmers were filling in the potholes in the Midwest, the ducks were being wiped out. That duck stamp, which is still, it's a tax, basically, if you want to go duck hunting, you have to buy a federal duck stamp, that's 25 bucks. In Massachusetts, you pay another $5 for a state water fowl stamp. $700 million was raised over the years, 5 million acres of wetlands from the federal duck stamp. But that was just the beginning. 1937, this organization called Ducks Unlimited came into existence. When I was a little boy, they dragged me to the meetings, smoke-filled rooms, people spending money on ridiculous art just to donate money for the ducks. Ducks Unlimited has saved or created 15 million acres of wetlands. Now, with the 5 million, I read online, 26,000 square miles, basically, the size of the state of West Virginia is what the duck hunters did. Without the duck hunters, there's no funding. Without the marshes, there's no fish. See, it all works like a big circle. The grass breaks down, the zoo plankton eat the grass, they turn into baby fish. It's all one big circle, a kuma matata. So you wipe out the hunters, you wipe out the funding. Have you guys ever been to places like Westchester, New York, where the deer are so thick, they're running through neighborhoods, like urban sprawl neighborhoods? They beg hunters to come in there. People pay that have large pieces of property, pay people to come in and try to reduce the deer numbers. If we stop hunting the deer in Harwich, very shortly, we're going to have a Westchester or a Fort Lee, or like where I grew up in South Jersey, where the deer are like rabbits, you know? And I live on Great Western Road, and I went to sea for 23 years. So for 23 years, I was gone 200 days a year. So I'm not track, I haven't had a good track record as far as watching things all the time. But I know of three deer that were killed while I was off the ship on Great Western Road. Johnny Hour got, his company got one of them, right there where the railroad track crosses, a big 200-pound buck, you know? There was a doe killed crossing the road at Lothrup. You know, unfortunately, a young man several years ago, nobody knows why, but right where they crossed, he lost control of his car. And the funny thing is, and, you know, I'm standing here with God as my witness, this fall, my son works with me, showed up at my house at 4:00 in the morning. It was spooky. Right exactly where that young man passed away, my son said to me, "Dad, I don't know how I missed him." Big buck. So you leave that go unchecked for a little while, and then what's the plan? Where are the taxpayers going to go to try to call the herd? It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. We're hunter-gatherers, we have eye teeth. We're supposed to do this, we're supposed to manage. And on to the waterfowl. Buffalo heads are the wrong species to pick. Buffalo heads are not in trouble. The state of Massachusetts just increased the limit on buffalo heads. I know more about ducks than I'd like you guys to know. I've been studying them my whole life. I love ducks. The, I've been hired by Massachusetts Audubon Society to capture ducks for environmental impact studies, University of Rhode Island, the federal government three times under Dr. Matt Perry, and biotech diversity. I've done eight studies. Even Mass Audubon, the head ornithologist said, "Hunting waterfowl is vital to waterfowl management." Ducks Unlimited biologist, the same thing. The head biologist for the federal government was on my boat three times. It's vital to the management. Right now, there's a boom of snow geese. The snow geese are so out of control in other parts of the country that the federal government is begging hunters to try to keep them under control. They're so thick right now that brant are being pushed off their nests up in the tundra. We have residential geese here that are putting feces all over all of our fields. They're not even real geese, they're hybrids. So you can't hunt them in Bell's Neck. What are we going to do? Hire people to go break goose eggs? I don't know. Hunting should be a part of our society. Hunting in Harwich should be allowed. This isn't a safety issue, this is an anti-hunting issue. Just like the last time when it was garbage. There's no hunter throwing garbage in Bell's Neck. And if they were, they should have been reported, and they should have been summoned. It's a false pretense. "I'm sorry, ma'am, I love you and I respect you. I went to war so that you could have your opinion." God bless you.
Ms. Stone.
To not get too aggravated, Mr. McCaskill's smug little puss over there.
We're not going to get into personalities, Ms. Stone.
No, we're not. No, we're not. And as I look around this room, a lot of people are not from Harwich, whether they just like the bleachers, I don't know. But having--
Everyone in this room should be a registered voter.
Okay, good.
And have a voter card, and if they're not, we're going to cull them out.
We're really talking tribal things as to, we don't have to hunt in order to eat. You may like it, you may choose it, that's great. But it is 2022, and no matter what you say about how many people are in Bell's Neck, there are too many for it to be safe for hunting, sooner or later. And again, this is a quote fairy tale. Same way, the fact that I mentioned before at other places, that there's a zillion nips that are cleaned up at Bell's Neck, but no, no hunters drink, that they're, they're all safety-minded. That's why people are shooting and killing seagulls on Red River Beach. This doesn't make a lot of sense, some of the real things that are going on. And so many people have spoken to me, I have gone to recycle to get signatures, and, oh, well, I live in, I live in West Harwich. I am so tired of being awoken at 4:30 in the morning. But hunters say, no, they don't show up at 4:30 in the morning. But they do. And they disrupt the peace and quiet of people that live in West Harwich. And that's one of the main reasons that I'm here, because I'd like to enjoy where I live and not be awoken by gunshots. And it's not, it's four months of the year. At the conservation thing, someone suggested, well, all these dog walkers should just go away for four months so we can do our hunting thing. This is, we should be compromising, we should be trying to get along. And there are five other places that can hunt in Harwich. Please hunt there. I hope you take a, there are a lot of people that I know feel the way I do, and they're standing here, they're sitting here, whether they're afraid to get up, that they'll get shot, I don't know.
Please, give your attention to the speaker.
Attention, she's suggesting a corona threat. I'm sorry.
I was followed home after the time that I stood up and spoke before. But I'm of a certain age, I'm, I don't care. I feel very strongly about what I spoke about, there are no made-up tales, my husband saw the skinned deers. The other thing of the two baby deers, that has not been, I heard it from someone in conservation. I don't think they'd make it up. I hope you will vote to outlaw hunting in Bell's Neck, because for the vast majority of people, they prefer peace and quiet, they prefer walking their dogs, they prefer using the land for more peaceful uses. Thank you.
Anyone who hasn't spoken, Mr. Weiser.
May I call the question?
You may. So Mr. Weiser has made a motion to move the question, which is to terminate debate on this matter. It requires a three-fourths majority to pass. But before I take this oral vote, I'm going to ask that anyone who's in this hall who doesn't have one of these cards, leave the hall right now. Anyone who doesn't have one of these, who's in the hall, leave if you don't have one. I want to make sure everyone in here is a voter. Anyone who doesn't have one, please leave, or come to the non-voting section to my right. Got to have one of these cards to be here. Non-voting section's right up here, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, so the motion before you is that the article be accepted and adopted. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion did not carry. Article 55. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't terminate debate, I'm sorry. Yep, we're going to, we're going to terminate debate first. My apologies. So the motion is whether or not to terminate debate, and that requires a three-fourths majority.
I withdraw the motion.
Excuse me?
I withdraw the motion.
You can't withdraw the motion unless somebody else, whoever seconded it withdraws the second as well. And I, I'm ready to have it voted on, so I'm going to take it. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 54 so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
All right, so I need a three-fourths vote on this, so if I don't get a unanimous vote, I'll have to take a standing count. I'm going to try it one more time. All those in favor of terminating debate so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I'll have to take a standing count. Are the tellers still in the hall? I need one more teller, one of our tellers left. Yes, sir, come on up, I'll swear you in. Wait just a second.
I just want to swear in a firm, but I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a teller.
Okay. And your name?
Frank Chadwick.
Greg Chadwick. Okay.
So you're going to take this table in the bleacher section to the back, and then hold it longer, yeah, on the, that's what I mean. Yes, you are. Those in front of you, at the back bleacher section. And then the people on the wall up to the middle, just the ones standing as you are, all right? No, and you take this table, too.
Ed, you're taking your same down?
You're taking this section here, Tom, take the table, back wall to the middle.
Okay. Okay, so what we're voting on is whether to terminate debate. All those in favor of terminating debate, please rise and be counted. Hold up your voting card, please. Mr. Chadwick?
Can't hear you.
32. Mr. Evans?
59.
59. All those opposed to terminating debate, those in opposition to terminating debate, please rise and be counted. None, zero? Mr. Chadwick, one? Mr. Evans?
Zero.
Stay here at, zero, thank you.
220, 30. Add it again, 59, 68, 61, and 32.
So those in favor, 220, those opposed, one. We'll now move to the main motion, which is that Article 54 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. And I'm going to try this one on a voice vote first. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion did not carry. Just got a few more to go. See if the town will vote to protect the historic West Harwich Schoolhouse with an historic restriction that rides with the deed to protect the asset from demolition and assure the rehabilitation follows the guidelines of the Department of Interior of Historic Preservation. A positive vote would require the Board of Selectmen through the town administrator to place an historic restriction on the building to any action to sell, donate, rehabilitate, or lease the building. The vote seeks only to preserve the footprint and character of the building, exterior, and does not affect work to the inside. This assures that the RFP for any sale or lease or gifting adheres to the historic restrictions, whether a nonprofit or for-profit entity gains rights to the building. Finance Committee has indefinite postponement. The petitioner wants to make a positive motion. I recognize Mrs. Urbano.
Yes, please. I'm Sally Urbano from West Harwich, and I make a positive motion to accept and adopt this, this article as written.
Okay, so the motion is to accept and adopt as printed. Debate, Ms. Urbano.
Can I approach the, can I use the--
You want to use this?
Please.
Certainly may.
I could say they save the best for last, but not as much time, so I'm going to make this as short as I possibly can. The historic West Harwich Schoolhouse sits off Old Main Street, behind the historic Baptist Church, and an ancient cemetery. It's a classic village view. However, since I put this article in, the town has issued a new RFP for sale, and I really do not know where that is in this process. But I still think this is an important conversation, and I want to have it with you, and I want to hear what you have to say. So I'm going to make this very short. You might ask why a historic restriction was needed for the West Harwich Schoolhouse. A varied group of experts have judged the schoolhouse as an important historic building, and it's a contributor to Captain's Row, the Massachusetts Historic Commission, the site review team that recommended national register status, the Massachusetts Cultural Council, and surprisingly, even MassDOT when they walked the area. The old photos show us children of varied economic and cultural backgrounds in attendance, and the Baptist church where Jonathan Walker, that's the man with the brand in hand, he attended that Baptist church. It's really a telling snapshot of Harwich history and of our values. Collectively, our village atmosphere can be threatened in times of rapid growth, and we need some protection. So with a yes vote on this position, we inform the administration that our town-owned historic schoolhouse needs a historic restriction before it is considered for sale, for lease, or gifting. In closing, I want you to go home and look at your village with new eyes. What would you miss? What defines your village, where you live, and what if it were taken away? And I want you to remember one more thing. We are seven villages, we are one town, and we're going to need each other if we are to maintain our village character, our history, and our pride of place. So please vote yes to see that we could get a historic restriction on this schoolhouse. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 55, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and first for the information of the Assembly. The Board of Selectmen had directed me as chief procurement officer to initiate a request for proposal process, RFP, several months ago. That process was underway when this petition article was being considered and was then presented to the town in the formal manner. Mr. Moderator, the town has executed a purchase and sale agreement through the Board of Selectmen with the responsive, responsible proposer, and so if I may, through you to Town Council, the question would then have, what does that affect, if any, on Article 50, excuse me, 55 and potentially 56?
Sure. Amy, Town Council.
Thank you, Amy Questle, Town Council. Mr. Moderator, through you, the fully executed purchase and sale agreement is a binding contract. Furthermore, any, any direction from this town meeting that a historic, historic restriction has to be placed upon this property would be in conflict with previous legislative intent which allowed the selectmen, or the select board, I'm sorry, allowed the select board to sell the property and enter into the RFP, and then subsequently into the purchase and sale agreement. So in my opinion, we have a binding contract, and that contract cannot be breached.
Any further debate, Mr. Urbano?
I have one question. When was that purchase agreement signed?
Mr. Powers, date of execution.
I think the official date of execution was the board's meeting a week ago, Monday-- I think the official date of execution was the board's meeting a week ago, Monday, when the board authorized the final language and directed me to finalize negotiations with the party. If I may continue, the party signed the next day, the board executed it the following day.
So what day was that?
What day is this?
When was the?
A week ago tomorrow.
So all five signatures of the board were on that document a week ago Friday, correct?
A week ago Wednesday, correct.
A week ago Wednesday.
All five members.
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak, I just have to say that I don't hold it against the Selectmen for taking the action. I do think that it was rushed, I do think the process was rushed. I wish that the town would have had the opportunity to get its opinion out. It's a shame that didn't happen. Hopefully, moving forward, the town will absolutely give us an opportunity to have an input on all historic buildings. We've heard a lot about land, culture, history during these last two days. Nothing says what a town is more than its buildings, its historic buildings. They give us character and a vision back to who made us. Sally didn't say this, or maybe she's going to say it later, that's my wife. When we talk about land, her father, her mother, Ralph Van Elna Hayward, had the foresight to be one of the founding members of the Conservation Trust. We hope that that same foresight is held by our town administration in terms of looking at its historic structures and what they mean to this community. Thank you.
Further debate, Mr. Kukunas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to set the legislative body's mind a little bit at ease on this particular subject. First of all, I don't know where Mr. Urbano was coming from by mentioning a statement that this building should have been brought before us before. I think I have stood at this mic fifteen different times, talking about this building in the last fifteen years. I look across and see Alan Thompson sitting over there, I remember when he used to sit on this side. This building has been front of this body, I don't know how many times, countless times, number one. Number two, I want to set your mind at ease a little bit, too, is what the process that the Selectmen went through. This building was put up in the newspaper, duly advertised. They held an examination, for lack of a better explanation, where it was open to the public. People who were interested in it could come and see it. My wife and I attended that. We were also accompanied by, I would say, six other parties that were people of interest to purchase it. They appeared to have some intelligence on construction, future use. Myself personally, I have a structural engineering background. I crawled under the building. Subsequently after that, public viewing, there were three bids submitted to buy it, and under public disclosure, my wife and I were one of those bidders. The gentleman that won the bid outbid us by a few thousand dollars, I believe one-hundred and seventy-five thousand is what he's paying for it. Very nice young man, had an excellent proposal to turn it into three dwelling units. He has all intentions of maintaining the integrity of the historic, especially the exterior part of the building and its historic nature. So I feel very happy that he was, in fact, the winning bidder, and that this building finally, finally, after many years, is now going to be used. And it's going to be used for something good. Person who won the bid is not looking to knock it down, he's not looking to build six homes, if I remember right, back eight or nine years ago, I think there was a proposal to build a kind of wing off the back of it with five or six units in it. This is not overdeveloping the area. I believe he said three with a maximum of four, and I bet you he'll only keep three because once you build the fourth, you have to go into new building code regulations. So I just want to set you all at ease that I believe the Board of Selectmen in this particular case did the right thing moving forward, and I think that the town of Howard is going to be very pleased with the gentleman who bought it and the future and the use of this building. So thank you. And please, just vote this down, we don't need it. Vote it down.
Further debate? Anybody else knew? All right, Ms. Urbano, you have one. Sandy McLaren?
Yeah, just real quick. I thought in the last town meeting, we voted to preserve the roof, and I thought the mood of the town meeting body was to preserve this building. I don't know how that works through the legal system, but I'm curious what Larry Ballantyne has to say. He opposed this. I picked on Don now. Would you mind?
Mr. Ballantyne, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Excuse me, Mike, what can I use?
Yes, Mr. Ballantyne.
My concern was partly what we discussed before, is that we try to protect historical value as much as possible, and that was my objection going forward, and that's been my objection and my discussion during our Selectmen's meetings. As Mr. Kukunas said, our last RFP, someone's bid, and we accept proposal for one-hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I felt comfortable with his response that he was going to protect the historical facade of the building. Also, people explained that he had a strong reputation, and so I think I'm going in the right direction.
Further debate, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I want to say to you all tonight, by all means, do this. Pass this article. No, not this article. What the, yes, sorry. What the Selectmen are proposing to sell, by all means, sell. I'll tell you why. I was a member of the Board of Selectmen several years ago. The building was in use.
Mr. Thompson, you have to speak into the microphone, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I was on the Board of Selectmen several years ago, and the building was in use full-time. It was in good shape, it was perfect. American Legion, the Scouts, it was fantastic. And then some problem with the floor. Town engineers said the underpainting of the floor was bad, it needed to be redone. Well, the board at that time chose not to do anything, so the building sat. It got closed, and now it's sat all these years, the windows got broken, the interior went down, but it was a beautiful building. There was no reason not to fix the underpainting. It was in use, everything worked fine, great spot. So what I'm suggesting tonight is follow with the Selectmen, move ahead with this because the end result is demolition. My father went to school there, a lot of locals were there, and it was a shame to see it happen. We have other problems, a lot of other buildings that aren't being used, exchange hall with the same deal. Once we get an alternative, that was it. It was all downhill from there. So by all means, do what the Selectmen are doing. Follow them. Thank you.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Motion before you on Article 55 is that be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The motion does not carry. Article 56. Yes?
Could I ask about the proper protocol, and I know I feel sorry for your poor souls, but very quickly for reconsideration of 54, Article 54? Because there were a few that didn't get to say a few quick things regarding that.
You know, we did have a motion to move the question, and only one person opposed it.
Well, we were, yeah.
So anyway, the proper procedure is that you need to bring a motion for reconsideration, and it requires a three-fourth majority to pass.
Well, they'll never pass it. Never mind, I don't think they'll pass it, they're too tired.
So we're back to Article 56. To see if the town will vote to sell the historic West Howard Schoolhouse using the full provisions of Massachusetts Procurement Law 30B that includes the ability to donate surplus property to a nonprofit willing to rehabilitate the historic exterior of the building for the purposes of civic use. Do you want to make a positive motion on this one?
I would like to make a positive motion.
Okay, the floor is yours. And I assume that motion is to accept and adopt as printed?
Correct.
Is that your motion?
Yes, please.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Mrs. Urbano?
Okay, I brought this second petition to clarify to the town administration and to you, my fellow residents of Howard, that there is a provision within Massachusetts general procurement laws to allow a town to gift a building to a nonprofit. The petition, this petition came about during the request for proposal for sale of the schoolhouse when the nonprofit group from West Howard submitted a proposal. The town's position was that they needed a certain amount of money because of procurement law. However, under procurement laws, surplus properties such as this can be gifted to a nonprofit. This option was never considered. The practice of gifting to a nonprofit is a proven successful way to rehab and reuse historic buildings. Perhaps you ask, you know, why should a historic building be gifted? A nonprofit does the heavy lifting of assuming all responsibilities for the building, of raising the funds, of making and contracting for historic restoration, creating a civic use, and operating self-funding mechanisms. Taking on a project like this is the economic value that would be provided to the town. It's a heavy lift of love. The return to the town cannot be calculated on a financial basis only. In fact, if the economic opportunity of historic buildings and places to the town is overlooked, you have missed the point. If you think about a nonprofit, often they can accomplish things that a town cannot, will not, or does not have resources to do so. Nonprofits fill a need, in this case, to help preserve our buildings. I want to thank Mr. Wolf last night, who commented on Howard Conservation Trust and the forward thinking of its original founders who established that nonprofit. Their work is incredible, and as my husband mentioned, my mom and dad, Ralph Van Elna Hayward, were part of that original group. But it points to a need that now it's our turn to work at saving our historic resources as they are threatened and will need the oversight of the townspeople. And yes, this vote tonight would assure that in the future, the provision of gifting a historic building to a nonprofit could be used. Thank you.
Any further debate on Article 56? Mr. Kukunas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd ask that we turn this down. Number one, the building's already sold, as we've been told by the Board of Selectmen. The purchase and sale agreement has been signed. If for some reason that purchase and sale agreement doesn't go to its full fruition and the person backs out, the Selectmen are fully aware that they have the ability to put it back out under 30B and have other people that are interested in it, that quite frankly lost a bid by a couple of grand, rebid on it. And just so you'll know, in my proposal, we were going to restore the building as a historic meeting house and use it for historic purposes. So there are people out there, other than nonprofits, that are looking for something from us tonight for free, that are willing to step up to the plate and do it right, like the young man who outbid me and like myself. So please vote this down. If for some reason, again, it does not come to its fruition, I'm sure the Selectmen will do the right thing and put it back out under the 30B process and allow other people to come and look at the building and bid on it, including the Urbanos.
Town Council?
Thank you, Amy Questle, Town Council, through you, Mr. Moderator. Again, there is a binding contract to sell the property that cannot be breached. Furthermore, 30B Section 16 does not specifically allow property to be sold to a nonprofit. I'm not sure if the confusion is that 30B Section 15 does specifically allow property to be sold to a nonprofit, however, that property is only personal property. So therefore, any sale would be pursuant to the procurement laws in any event. However, again, there is a signed contract, a fully executed purchase and sale agreement, so this property is no longer available at this time.
Any further debate? Mr. Sakis?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. If we've already got it sold, then we can't give it away. So I think we should vote on this, if we can.
Any further debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. The motion before you is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The motion does not carry. So I'm going to step back on Article 57. Mr. William Crowell has agreed to moderate Article 57. I'd like the consent of the meeting for Mr. Crowell to be moderator on Article 57. All of those in favor? It doesn't sound like there's any opposition. Mr. Crowell? Article 57.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hang in there, folks, let's get it over with. And before we begin debate, keep in mind the lateness of the hour and that we're almost there, and if we don't focus and keep the debate limited to what's asked for in the article, which is a study, we're not passing judgment on what ultimately the use is going to be. It's a study. So I'll read Article 57. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to fund an independent professional study of the highest and best use of the former Howard's Middle School property. Town committees in the past have been unable to identify a use that is financially feasible or that fully utilizes the facility or the grounds in a comprehensive and acceptable way. Currently, the building and surrounding parking are being used as a cultural center to quote, 'serve as a rental space for groups and individuals to engage in recreational, social, educational, cultural, community service, civic, and governmental activities,' end quote, culture center webpage. However, after six years of financial support from Howard's taxpayers, annual revenues from the cultural center business fail to cover expenses. The deficit, excuse me, the deficit total for FY17 to FY22 partial year is more than five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. The purpose of this article is to enlist independent professional help to objectively determine the best uses, along with evaluations, pros, cons, and risks of each option for long-term use of this town asset. This study will also develop a comprehensive business plan specific to the cultural center use that provides detailed financial, organizational, staffing, and marketing plans that make this option financially self-sustaining.'"
Is there a positive motion on this article?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I'm the petitioner. I move to accept and adopt this article as printed in the warrant and that the sum of up to seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt this article as printed in the warrant and that the sum of up to seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Mr. Gunderson for debate, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Richard Gunderson, I'm the petitioner of this article. I think we all know that the general history of this is that this project or this building, this property, under an experiment or trial use, was losing money. That is, the revenue did not exceed the expenses for about the six years that it's been occupied. been operational. However, in that period of time, we thought possibly there might be some investigation worthwhile to at least go out and see if there's anything new out in the world and see if it might, another use might come up. We also recognized that housing was not number one, or number two, or number three, or all the way up to number 10 in popularity. So we really didn't expect much to come in that direction. But we felt it was at least worth doing an independent professional examination of the best use. However, also, given that it has been pretty much in business as a cultural center for this six years, since roughly, almost six years ago, June, June of 2016, that it was worthwhile to continue to investigate, making it a better cultural center. So that's why there's two tasks to this study. The first one is to take a quick look to see if there's anything that pops up, not through firsthand investigations throughout the country, but most likely an internet search, phone calls. We're not really expecting huge results, but we wanted to at least say we tried one more time, since the first two repurpose committees were more than eight years ago. The second and more extensive task, though, focuses on determining factors that are important to creating and maintaining a cultural center in a financially viable way. I want to take just a couple of minutes to clarify and correct some misunderstandings about this article. I'm not going to give you any more details. If you see the, the explanation of Article 57, the second, that, that basically gives you the background, scope of work, and deliverables for this second, second element of the second task of the, of the article. The activity is not against the Harwich Cultural Center. One more time, the activity is not against the Harwich Cultural Center. It is an attempt to help make the cultural center a success culturally and financially viable. When you read, and I have for the past several months after I filed this petition, or do any research on reuse of buildings specifically for cultural or arts centers, you quickly learn about the importance of strategic and business plans. Strategic being three to five years longer term, business plans typically being one or two years. All of those plans need a vision, they need a target, they need a consistent view of what one wants for that building. I'm not sure we know what that is yet. Financially self-sustaining, by the way, are not dirty words. Why not try to be financially self-sustaining? If there is a way for a nonessential service like this to cover most or all of the expenses, why not at least try to do it? This request is not that much different than what we approved in Article 38 last night, which was a golf feasibility study. The golf department saw the potential benefit of a separate three-hole course. I kind of agree with it. And rather than study and design it in-house, they realized it could be done better by an outside consultant. We have done the same kind of thing with projects to restore the jetty at Allen Harbor and assessing surplus land values. We hire a professional independent consultant. This article proposes an investment in a venture started six years ago. It's an investment that has potential to get the Harwich Cultural Center to a next level and beyond. It is worth investing this amount of money to help find a better way forward that benefits all of Harwich, as well as nearby communities. The estimated funding is up to $75,000. That's less than one-half of the average annual deficit that taxpayers paid for every year since the Board of Selectmen approved the interim use plan. This activity is an opportunity to provide help to the new Director of Cultural Affairs. Why does that new, new person need help? Well, right now, the town administrator is going to be pretty busy finding qualified candidates for numerous open town positions. The 75K, 75,000 is an estimated cost. Depending on bids and consultant rates, it could be less, but it will not be more. Lastly, I think it's important to understand, the warrant that you have shows that many of the, matter of fact, six out of the seven, finance, Finco members sitting over at the table initially, voted in favor of this project. One selectman voted in favor of this project. I had fully intended to ask them to speak why they thought this was such a good deal. However, they all changed their minds somehow before yesterday's meeting started. And now, pretty much, nobody wants to do this study. So I would suggest that, that somebody should ask, if you don't, I will, what did they learn since the original favorable votes that made them change their minds? What, what light came on? I know I'd sure like to know. I hope you all will see the added value for this work being done by an independent professional consultant and vote to approve this article. Thank you very much.
Further debate? Mr. DeCosta?
Yes, I rise to amend the main motion. I move to amend the main motion by reducing the requested funding amount of $75,000 to zero.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the main motion by reducing the requested funding amount from, of $75,000 to zero dollars. Is there any debate on the motion? To amend? Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you. One of the things that did change since last night that Mr. Gunderson is talking about is Mr. Hughes and I were appointed to the Finance Committee recently, and last night was our first meeting. Since I've been a Finance Committee member, and even when I was a selectman before that, I've always been against paying for studies to do projects like this, unless it's a technical study where you actually need some type of expertise that you don't have. We didn't see the need to pay for this. The building that we're in right now was done with a no-charge study. It was created by a group of five people that put this whole building together for no cost to the town. The expertise is here. The Finance Committee would volunteer to do the financial part. There are plenty of people in our own town government that could help do this. We got the support of the selectmen last night to offer the town administrator and department heads and so forth to do whatever we need to do to get this information that Mr. Gunderson had asked us for. We think that all can be done in-house without paying for it. So we're asking you to save the money, $75,000 come free cash on this particular article.
Thank you. Further debate? Mr. Ballantyne?
Thank you. It appears I'm the odd man out on this discussion because I'm in favor of it. The reason I'm in favor of it is, is that, as Mr. Gunderson says, it has, it has cost us money, and it's been an experimental project for some years. But my point is, is that, and I'm, I'm not arguing that I should ever be a revenue generator, but we do lose money each year. We have a number of capital items that we're going to have to pay for in the future, so it's an expensive asset. In saying that, I do agree with my colleagues that it is an important asset to the town. We've used it successfully to do art projects for pickleball, which we make fun of, but is very popular. But I'm also told that we're using probably less than half of the value of that building for community projects. And we need to stop, I think, and look at what are, where we want to go with this building to take full advantage of it. And that may mean that we have to make some investments in it. We've talked about kitchens, we've talked about cultural events, and additional artists. We're hiring a new cultural director, but we're going to immediately bury her with a lot of work between the cultural center itself, the artist community at, at Sacatucket. We're asking her to do grant writing. That's a lot to put a person in, and at the same time, expect them, even with the help of other town staff, to take an independent and informed view of what are our possibilities. I think that needs to be independent. I think that with the money we're talking about, $75,000 is actually short money to be sure we're fully utilizing that facility and that to the, to what it can become. I'd rather have us spend that and take advantage and, and go along with our current path, which will struggle and will be successful to a small part. Think there's an expression that we hear often, that sometimes you get so busy chopping wood that you don't take time to sharpen your axe. Now's the time to sharpen that and look at it and what are the possibilities. So I, I would hope that you would vote for this.
Thank you. Further debate? And I know Mr. Gunderson was looking for light from the selectmen and the Finance Committee, so I'm focusing on them right now.
Mr. Chori from the Finance Committee?
Good afternoon, good afternoon, good evening. It is late. Name John Chori, Chair of the Finance Committee. We did vote initially six to one on this article in favor of the hiring a consultant or professional person to come in here and do a study of this building for the obvious, I mean, for the questions and statements that Mr. Gunderson outlined in his proposal. We still feel that way, at least I feel that way, and I'll ask other members to speak if they, if they feel differently or have anything else to add. I have been asking the same questions that Mr. Gunderson has been asking for many years, since I've been on this committee, and have gotten not many answers to it. The most important answer was the capital expenditures for this building. It's an old building, portions of it was built in 1937, and then it was rebuilt, I believe, in 1990 or 91. But not a addition put on, but I've been told that they've gone through the whole building and brought it up to standard at that time. We did meet last night, and as Dana said, he's a new member, not, he's a new member to this session of the Finance Committee, not a new member of the Finance Committee. And Mr. Hughes is also in that same position. We met last night mainly to go over some business of approving minutes and things like that. But then the question was brought up, do these folks want to, do we want to reconsider or think about other articles that we had voted on previously? And it's their right to do that, to reconsider articles that we voted on. And we did take a vote to reconsider this article, and, but then we adjourned and went into a selectmen's meeting and met with the selectmen, as we had scheduled, to talk about this article and other, another article that we had disagreements on. Spent most of the time on this article. And we talked about different avenues of saving possibly $75,000. And I'm still sort of in favor of spending the $75,000, but I'm also in favor of taking advice from folks that have been around this particular article. It's almost like a West Harwich school article. Couple, at least Mr. Hughes has been on the Board of Selectmen in 2016, when these articles came up then. And after listening to him, listening to Dana, listening to the selectmen, and the selectmen are making an honest attempt at providing these answers and have said that they would work towards that with yet another committee or to look at this building for best uses, costs, and programs, as outlined in Mr. Gunderson's proposal. So that's what I, that's why I changed my vote, because I'd like to see this vote building a success. I did stop by on Saturday. I spent a couple hours there, visiting all the artists, artisans in residence there, speaking with people, and it's a wonderful, a wonderful building. There's 40 artisans in there right now, paying a rent. One could argue it's a subsidized rent or undervalued rent. That's what this study would, would, would produce, that type of information, along with programming information on how to make this building a success. I did visit the cultural center in Yarmouth, I think it's called the Cape Cod Cultural Center, and it's a building of much smaller scale. It's a building of about 10,000 to 15,000 square foot. This building at the 204 Sisson Road is about 78,000 square feet. It's a nonprofit, as Mr. Gunderson has said in his explanation, and they are very successful. But again, it's a building of 15,000 square feet. Their budget to run that building is about $1 million, 1.2 million. They take in about 1.2 million in expenses. It's a very successful program, and that was what, one of the things that we were looking at. Maybe we could mirror some of that also. And there's other examples, too, of successful 501(c)(3) in the art world. It's a very tough situation here with this building. But the whole purpose of the private petition was to get the information we needed. And I've got to trust the selectmen in what they said to me last night, in that they would study this. An important thing to note, too, that this building is under the control of the selectmen. There is a two-year process or two-year left on the study, if you want to, it's in quotations, if you want to call it the study, because it's been studied for the last six years. And I have not seen good financial information. I have seen some financial information, but not enough, and I've been asked repeatedly to get that in financial information. I have not received. But I do want to give the selectmen credit. It's under their control. They've done a great job in managing it, and along with the town administrator. So whatever we need to do to bring this to some type of light is what I'd like to do. And I, again, would trust the selectmen, working, at least when we were talking last night, they would work very closely with the Finance Committee to get this information and then come back, because again, there's two years left on this study program. And even tonight, if we approve the money, it's still under the direction of the selectmen to move forward with what the recommendation is tonight. And so that's how I looked at this project, and I, I do favor the cultural center. I don't want any misconception about that. All I'm asking for is financial information on, on the building and, and program direction. And that's something with this cultural, hiring this new cultural director might give us that. But that's, this person, as this is outlined by Larry, has, has got three other hats that they'll be wearing, and so they'll be a very busy person. So if anyone else on the committee has a, has an opinion or anything else, I'd be happy to hear, as along with the town folks. Thank you.
So I'm going to take one more from the board up front, and I want to hear from the, from the public. Ms. Kavanaugh from the Board of Selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm trying to remain focused on the study, and so thank you to Dana and John that we did discuss that we understand the need to look at the income, but we also understand the need to not spend $75,000. We can certainly do this assessment internally, but there's a couple of things that have to be clarified. It has not been in existence six years. We had two years of COVID where the building was closed. So we've got really two more years in our, in our plan, and we're trying to make the, the best of that and see what else we can bring in, because in a matter of the 2016 to currently, the programs that have gone on there are fantastic, and every member of this community, in terms of age bracket, youth is playing foots all in there, participating in classes, art classes, stitchology. You have middle-aged people and the elderly, all doing pickleball or art classes, and it's not all your typical art. So we're all, there's a value there. We understand the need to increase the financials. But again, we had a full-time department. We understand the need to increase the financials, but again, we had a full-time department head bringing in a whole new source of people to come into the building and express their interest, come up with leases, rates, and all of that. All those things need to be reassessed, and we are investing in hiring a full-time person to be able to increase the use of that building. We have other parts of that building that are not currently being used that we're looking forward to new situations where we could be looking at the cafeteria, the auditorium, never mind the other spaces that aren't currently being used. So we feel that this can be done, and we've collectively had a talk about all of this. And so there is no need to spend seventy-five thousand dollars when they have the expertise in-house, and we are hiring somebody who's also going to bring in more creative uses of the building. So we would ask that we do not go forward with the amendment, I mean, sorry, go forward with the amendment to not have the seventy-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. So keep in mind, the motion in front of you right now is to amend the main motion by eliminating the funding aspect from seventy-five thousand to zero dollars. Yes, sir.
Michael Redden, East Harwich. Sorry about that. Let me get a jester here.
That's all right. You woke us up.
I respectfully support the general notion of the study. However, I move to amend Article fifty-seven such that Task One A, which is the continued use of the Cultural Center, studied to identify what makes financially viable, precede Task One.
I'm sorry, sir, that the tasks are not part of the article. They're an explanation of the article. You can't amend the task. You can only amend the main article. So the motion in front of you is to amend the main motion by reducing the funding from seventy-five thousand to zero dollars.
I recede my motion.
Okay. Thank you. Further debate, this gentleman over here.
Thank you, Simon Evans, East Harwich. And really, it's more contextual. The Cultural Center is an integral part of the effort that's been going on for many years, led mostly by the Harwich Cultural Council, to get the cultural designation that we have for Harwich Center, as we also have with Harwich Port. So as we consider action associated with this, including now hopefully a zero-cost study, I think it's important to bear in consideration that this is an integral part of why we will, we have been designated as a cultural district. You take out the Cultural Center, there isn't a whole lot left to talk about for a cultural district. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Bob Pianodosi, Harwich Port. A couple, maybe a month ago, two months ago, I approached the Select Board about this particular issue and, and the Cultural Center. I am not against the Cultural Center. My wife would kill me if I probably said that. But I am very, very, my concern is, and it's actually kept me up a couple of nights thinking about how the Cultural Center is functioning, what it's doing currently. The things that bothered me, that concerned me the most was seventy-seven thousand square foot building. This is not, and today's cost would be about thirty million dollars to build it. So, you know, you kind of think about, you know, can we, can we successfully fill these spaces, make it successful? And the study, Mr. Gunderson's study, which I thought is very articulate and does a great job, I think was a, was a good first step. Now, this is, this is a surprise. All of a sudden, you know, in the last twenty-four hours, there's been a change, and there's kind of been a redirect to study the building, which I think it should be done. I think it should have been a habu study, highest and best use, and, and so we've kind of diverted from that. But I'd like to see, I'd like to hear what the commitment is from the Finance Committee, how they're going to approach this. Seventy-seven thousand square foot building. You've got an auditorium, you've got function spaces, this cafeteria, pickleball, basketball, pickleball courts, and I look at the hallways and the carpeting and the flooring and the windows. So long-term, this is not, you know, can't, this isn't going to be solved and say, okay, we're going to, we're moving to this building and we're going to be fine for the next five years. This building has costs associated with it coming down the road, and I know we can easily push the cost out and say, well, push it out one, two, three, or four years. But there are real costs associated with the building. There are real costs in making this building essentially sustainable, and I'd like to hear from the Finance Committee what the plan is. Now, we're going to do it in-house, that's great, but what is the plan, and what does it look like, and what's the timeframe in which we're going to have this particular proposal? We've already hired somebody to manage this building. You know, we've got the cart before the horse, which is, I approached, I approached the Select Board earlier. So we're hiring people to do this project, and, and it wasn't well-defined what this particular person was going to do. Was a grant writer, a manager, a marketing person, and I was in the recruiting business, and I would tell my client, this is, this is, you know, a tough deal. So what is the commitment from the Finance Committee and the Select Board to give us a timeframe in which we can look at this thing? And I think the seventy-five thousand dollars was probably money well-spent, because it's a one-time fee. If we can do it internally and we can come up with the same result, that's fantastic. But we need to be objective and unbiased, and I think we need a timeline in which this is going to be done. Thank you.
I have a member from the Finance Committee and the Board of Select, and the Select Board that can't wait to answer those questions. Mr. Hughes from the Finance Committee.
I can't wait to answer, because I attended my first Finance Committee meeting last night, and I've been a member about a month, so bear with me. Having said that, back when the decision was made, three to two vote to have a cultural center or do the cultural center experiment, as I would call it, I was sitting on that side of the table. I did not vote for it, full disclosure. I was one who's advocating to turn the property into housing. Okay? That did not succeed, and I will say, I am very pleased that we moved forward with the cultural experiment, cultural center, whatever you like to call it, because I firmly believe that we've done, they've done, a great job with the cultural aspect of the Cultural Center. It's become a great place for those folks involved in culture, arts, music, whatever. What we haven't done, and one of the reasons I had problems with it day one when we started it, exactly what you're saying, what is the plan? Because I knew, I knew, like most of you knew, that the building was not going to last forever. Things were going to start breaking down. It's all great when you move into a new house and everything's working. Ten or fifteen years later, and we didn't move in ten years later, we moved in a lot longer later than that. That building was renovated in ninety-one, if I remember correctly. Things start to break down. Heating systems start to not work. Flooring needs to be worked on, et cetera. It may need to be reconfigured for the purpose you're intending to use it for. There was never a plan, but the experiment continued, and as I say, here we are, five, six years later, it's been a great cultural success. Now's the time to figure out what it takes to move it forward and either keep it as a cultural center or however we're going to go in that, you know, with the purpose of it. Last night, we had a meeting, first with the Finance Committee, and then we met with the Board of Selectmen. I had heard unofficially as an outsider in the process before I came a member of the Finance Committee, that there were some challenges in the information flow to support a study between the two boards. I'll just say that, okay? In our meeting last night, I became convinced, maybe some others did as well, that we can improve that communication flow, and with the will of the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, and the Finance Committee to effectively work together, I believe we can come up with the answers we all want. Because for me, and I'm just making this up, if we get all done and we say on an operating basis, oh, it costs each of the taxpayers eight, eight dollars a year to support the community center because it runs a deficit, wow, we're all happy, right? It's good. If the number comes out eighty dollars a year per taxpayer in the town, we start to say, well, maybe I do want to make that investment and I want to have that. If the number comes out eight hundred, I think we all say, you know, there might be some other option we can do. Okay? So we need to know that. You people know, need to know in full disclosure what those numbers are. The other thing I heard last night that I did not realize before, and I think you saw it in one of the charts this evening, is that we're now referring to that as a municipal building. Well, of course, it's a municipal building. Most people now call it the Cultural Center, the Harwich Cultural Center, but I believe as we look at the building, we look at the needs of the town, there will be some need within that building for some space for existing town services, if you will, that will probably co-occupy or co-locate with the cultural activities. It's just a fact. You know, we're growing, the town's growing as far as what the services go and whatnot, and I think that has to be factored into it. I'm firmly convinced we can get this done. I'd like to say that we can get it done, so we bring something back to next year's town meeting. I can't commit on the part of the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator or my team on the Finance Committee. We are, as you know, going to hire a new, a new person in the Cultural Center to, you know, oversee it and manage it. I think a lot depends on the skill set that person brings and how they fit with the team. For me, I would say you would get a response and get an answer back this time next year, delivered to town meeting.
Excuse me, I want to follow up. So have we, have we determined what the job description is for this particular person? And how this fits into?
The Finance Committee isn't responsible. I would ask, I would ask town administrator or members of the Board of Selectmen who have thought about that a lot more than our team has, so I'll let them answer that one.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anybody from the Board of Selectmen?
Nobody wants to, Mr. Howell wants to.
That wants to answer that question.
You're excited about this, I can tell.
Don wants to.
Got the short straw after all.
Mr. Howell.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The answer is we don't have a job description now. It's, it's under development, but it actually segues into what I wanted to say anyway. I agree with everything Mr. Hughes said, and Julie had made an excellent point about the COVID. I'm not going to go all over that again, but I am going to say, I've run three charitables for a bunch of years now, and the one part of the P and L that you need to be able to examine can't be done through a consultant. It's the profit part. The person we hired last night should be in a position within their job duties to be able to seek out other opportunities for financing. There isn't a charitable that I know of that winds up getting enough on their service receipts to cover their expenses. They always get grants. There's always auxiliary things that go on that sustain them. I'm not an expert on the cultural aspect of this and where all the money is. I know the Mass Cultural Council exists, and I know that there's a number of benefactors out there that could help with the profit side of this. It's easy to determine what the expense was, and by the way, we didn't do a great job as a town when we closed it up because there were leaking pipes, there were a lot of problems there, but it's a municipal building, as was been said before. We're going to use a part of it for that because we've outgrown the town hall, which, by the way, is two years older than this building. And I wanted to address one other aspect of this, because everybody's thinking that at least part of this is falling down because it was built in nineteen thirty-seven. That whole school was ripped apart and rebuilt in nineteen ninety-one, the whole thing, including the older part of it. So that, to say that the building is old and it's going to cost us a gazillion dollars to keep going is not really forthright, and it's not going to help to get a consultant in, because it's going to take six months for them to hit the ground, understanding exactly what the metrics are, who's using it, how much we're getting for it. I fully expect that we need to be able to augment that through grants. The only person that can help us with that is someone we have yet to hire, and, and we don't need to spend seventy-five thousand dollars to do that. We just need to hire the person to allow them to work with the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen to bring something to you that makes sense on a profit and loss basis.
Well, I think, I think the, thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Powers, I'm going to recognize, he has a job description of the person in question.
The Board of Selectmen approved job descriptions, I believe, in late February, early March of this year for the position of Director of Cultural Affairs and for the Housing Advocate. The job descriptions are all set.
Can you share that with us, what the job description sounds like? No?
I can tell you that it was created in the standards that are promulgated by the Mass Municipal Association HR process. It is a standard job description, and as I've said to other folks at other events, whatever that individual does, the study that we're talking about is not in their job description, because it's a one-timer. The study, however, is an integral part of their performance evaluation.
Thank you.
Mr. Kakounis, keeping in mind that it's quarter of midnight.
Oh, now, Mr. Acting Moderator, you're not going to cut me off before I even get up. I'm here strictly.
What eloquent succinct words would you like to share with us?
Strictly to speak on the amendment.
That, thank you.
Please know that this is probably the third time in my thirty-five years of coming to town meeting that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee are telling you, the legislative body of the town, don't give us the money, we don't need it. And you people are actually debating on whether you want to give it to them or not. Let's pass this amendment, and let's go ahead and pass the end result and go home. Thank you.
Is there any further debate? Ms. Sebula?
With all due respect, Mr. Kakounis, I sat on that Board of Selectmen too and the Finance Committee. I got twelve years into this. I think that we are going to be extremely shortsighted not to spend the money to get a professional in here. You're saying that you're going to hire a cultural director. It's going to take them six months to figure out where the bathroom is, let alone come up with a plan as to how they're going to make this, that building be better used and used to its best potential. We have other open positions in town that would be part of these plans. I understand we no longer have a planning director. So by the time these people get hired, we could have had a study done that would probably have some benefit. Most consultants that come in, or if we do a proper job of hiring Select Board and Finance Committee, we would probably get someone who would listen to the people who actually use the building and listen to the townspeople. They'd probably hold some public hearings. They'd probably have some listening sessions. They're not going to go into a closet somewhere with a computer and diddle out some report that has no relevance to anything. They're going to do their jobs, but they're going to do their jobs such that we won't have to wait one to two to three years for the town to get it done. The town has other things to do, other things that they have to focus on. This is going to get short shrift. I would say spend the money, and I'm an accountant, I don't like to spend money, but spend the money, get the job done now, rather than wait another couple, three years. It's not about the money that is being spent year after year on this building. If it is determined that the town looks at a study and decides that they want to continue spending and funding the building, that's fine. But let's have some decent information professionally done, because if you remember back on, I just heard that it's not going to take a lot of money, this building's going to take money, in the capital plan that we just passed, I think last night, it's a long time ago at this point, is like over a million bucks on that building. That's also going to come out of our pockets too. So I say, turn down this amendment to turn the amount requested to zero, and let's get the job done by some professionals, because we certainly don't have them available to do this in any given timeframe. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Noreen Don.
Noreen Donahue Headwaters speaking on my own behalf. I heard the comments Mr. DeCosta made after he made the amendment, and while I certainly like the idea of people working together and saving some money, I'm bothered by the broadness of the comments made after the amendment. I heard Dana say that, you know, FinCom would handle the financial part, and there is other staff who will take care of the other matters. You know, I really think after waiting as many years as we did for any kind of numbers, if we were to proceed in that manner, you know, we're both trying to get to the same place by a different method, we'd need to know now as we vote more specifics about that plan. I don't think I can live with people just saying, well, we're going to handle the financial part and somebody else is going to do that. We'd need to know, you know, who's in charge and, you know, a general timeline, some of the comments made by a previous speaker. With that said, whether we have a study or an assessment done by FinCom or if it's done by a contractual firm, we need to know the parameters of the criteria chosen. If the desired use of this facility was to be a playground, we'd need to evaluate the suitability as a playground and to assess the costs that would be required to make it a proper playground. With that said, Mr. Moderator, through you, I would like to ask a question of the Chair of the Select Board.
And your question is?
And my question is, no matter who does an assessment or a study, as I said with the playground example, it's going to all be about the vision of what that facility is going to be, what we are paying money for to try to get to, for the benefit culturally of the whole town, and also not to burden taxpayers with, who have many other things to pay for at this time. So I would ask the Chair, is your vision for this building to be wholly a cultural center, wholly a municipal building, a hybrid of those two, or maybe a third thing?
Before he answers, just keep in mind again that we're talking about a study. We're not talking about, I know everything is relevant in some way to this, but we're talking about a study and not necessarily the end product.
Mr. Moderator, I would only say that without the townspeople knowing what the vision is, because we are all sitting here with different ideas of what the end product is, right now the Chair is the best example of that. I don't know how you can do a study if you don't know the vision.
I understand, and so I'm going to allow Mr. McCaskill to answer as briefly as he can.
Thank you.
That broad question.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. In the spirit of your directive before we started talking, and out of respect for the taxpayers that are still here at midnight, I could talk for hours about this and I know you don't want me to. We have two years left on a trial period on this building. And if you take away the two years that we were closed for COVID and couldn't operate that building, we've made tremendous progress in the use of a seventy thousand square foot building. We have a thriving group of artists in that building that love the building. Last weekend, we did an event in that building and there was a hundred and twenty people in that, that went to that event. Noreen, my vision of that building is not a fair assessment of what the Board's vision of that building is. So it's really an unfair question. My vision is it's a tremendous asset to the town, one that we may need for many municipal reasons, some outlined tonight, some not outlined tonight. Noreen, you and I have had that conversation. Mr. Gunderson, the petitioner, and I have had that conversation. So my opinion is we should do everything we can to put as many residents in there as we can and as many uses of that building as we can. The cultural part of it is a very important part of it. We've heard tonight that there is a need for employees to possibly be in that building. We have a gymnasium, we have a cafeteria. It's a tremendous asset, and I envision all of the taxpayers having something in that building to use. Last night, we voted nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a piece of land that some might use. Last night, we voted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a pickleball court that some might use. Though I do believe some of the numbers in the petition article, I do not believe them all. That building is bringing in revenue. We have three hundred thousand dollars sitting in a revolving fund, and a lot of residents want to use that building. There is plenty of growth in the two-thirds of the building that we're not using. My commitment, and I do believe I can speak to my colleagues, is the Board of Selectmen is committed to working with the Finance Committee and the group that has not been mentioned tonight, Capital Outlay, whose responsibility is to explore the capital outlay of the building. So Capital Outlay and the many professionals that live in this town that would be willing to donate their time, as they did in this building, to make that a thriving cultural and municipal building. And in fairness to everyone going home at some point tonight, well, now tomorrow, I think that that's my vision, not the Board's vision.
Thank you. Mr. Weiser.
This is really quite the hour to be having a discussion of visions on the subject of the actual amendment to the actual article that's before us. The Massachusetts Cultural Council is a resource that we have only begun to explore. And part of the reason we've only begun to explore it is because in order to apply for some of their grant programs, we needed the kind of commitment from the town institutionally that we really made for the first time last night, which was to actually hire a cultural director to manage our activities in the cultural sphere, including the two designated cultural areas in the town, in Harwich Port and Harwich Center, including the 204 Sisson Road Municipal Building, AKA the Harwich Cultural Center. The name is going to be an interesting challenge because obviously there is going to be a discussion about both uses, which wasn't my vision personally. And I speak as the music director of the Harwich Cranberry Festival, and I've presented a number of events in the auditorium at that facility successfully and demonstrated to anybody who wants to know that audiences will come and use that facility even in its limited technical capacity. It's not a state-of-the-art auditorium like the auditorium at Montomoy Regional High School. It's also not as big. These are good things. So I think it's a great idea for us to approve the amendment to not spend the seventy-five thousand dollars at this time, partly because I believe that there's grant money available from the Mass Cultural Council for exactly that purpose. But I don't think that will happen by a year from tonight, Mr. Hughes. I think it might take a little longer than that. But I also think we have a little bit more time with the experiment that we've committed to, especially given the two years, two-and-a-half-year loss of actual activity. It's a long time since I put a concert in that auditorium, although I'm looking forward to doing the shows outside in the courtyard this summer now that we've resolved some of these issues. So I urge us to vote the amendment and then move forward with the plan. As one of the professionals who's waiting to contribute my expertise to the planning process, I hope that we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McManus, are you looking to speak?
I find myself in an interesting position, on the one hand disagreeing with my patriot, Mr. Weiser with the Cranberry Festival, and agreeing with Mr. Gunderson, which I don't normally do. But I think my past history in this town, when I was first here, we tried to develop a plan and apply for grant funding to do a plan for Harwich Center. The application that we were trying to put together, the Harwich Center Initiative Committee, we were asking for measly twenty-five hundred dollars to get the technical assistance we needed to prepare that grant application. Unfortunately, that article was not forwarded on at the last minute to town meeting, and we tried to go ahead by ourselves, using the town planner and whatever other professionals we could get on the cheap in town. We put in our application, we missed a number of things, and that effort fizzled. I would hate to see us develop a grant application to receive funding for the improvements that would be needed because we didn't have the professional expertise needed to make sure that our application and plan had all the necessary elements that organizations like the Mass Cultural Council needs to make their assessment on whether or not to grant funding for renovations and improvements of large cultural facilities. And this will be a large cultural facility. You need somebody to help you through that process who has experience in managing a large cultural facility. So I think by eliminating the funding, we may be, you know, penny wise and pound foolish, you know? I hope that if this amendment does pass, that when needed to get the expertise and technical expertise needed, that you maybe will look at using some of the three hundred thousand dollars you have in the revolving fund to make sure that we do as professional a job in putting ourselves forward to be a major cultural player in this state.
Thank you. The gentleman behind you. Yes, sir.
Charles Kruska, in relation to the amendment, I'm going to try to sum it up in one word, but first make some observations of where I'm hearing consensus. My background and training has been in human relations, listening skills, and I followed this right through this past year, this particular, the debate back and forth. What I've heard is there seems to be consensus that there's been great progress made with the Cultural Center, and there's a lot of support for that. I'm hearing that there's a desire for the building to be used maximally and for multi-use purposes. We're supported the idea of the Cultural Center with approving the Director of Cultural Affairs. I've seen the job description for the Director of Cultural Affairs correct. There is nothing in there about planning for multipurpose use of that building. The Director of Cultural Affairs' focus is going to be on cultural affairs for the town, may not necessarily be the expertise in handling recreation, municipal use, town office use of the building. It's limited. I'm hearing tonight consensus that there needs to be a study. So I'm going to pose this amendment on one word, and that's trust. What I've also picked up is this is a very political issue in town. This is an issue that there are a lot of people that have very strong feelings, very strong attitudes. There are a lot of people who have been involved in this process over several years. We've heard many of them speak tonight. They have biases as they come to the table. What we're going to want to do is when the plan comes forward, we're really going to maximize support of the town and the voters to support that plan, to support the Select Board in where they want to go forward and give their input to the Select Board where they want to go forward. And so to me, the best way to engender that trust is to have an outside, independent, unbiased person, then bring all the stakeholders that want to come to the table. And if we get the right person, that's what they should be able to do. And we've talked about all this expertise in town. People with all the expertise will be part of that process. But the outcome will come out of a report that's independent outside of the town, outside of the politics, the history, the investment that people have. And I think you'll have a much broader support and consensus from the townspeople for whatever we want to do that comes from that support.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Mr. McCaskill. This is his third time speaking, but his second time was to answer the vision question. So this is his second time speaking.
Very briefly, when we mentioned who was going to work on this plan internally, Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, and Capital Outlay, whom you trust immensely with what you give us to manage our budgets, and Town Administrator, but the people. I know I spoke to the petitioner about this today, and I know I spoke to Mr. Conroy about this. We would certainly look to the public for input on this. This is not something that's going to be done in a vacuum. And then lastly, Ed McManus just mentioned, we aren't asking you for seventy-five thousand dollars. We have the money. It's in a revolving fund for 204 Sisson Road, also known as the Cultural Center. And tonight, you appropriated or approved us spending up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So where we think we need experts, we already have the money, and we'll hire the experts for what we need the experts for. But past studies in your tax money has been used, and we have those studies already. We can do this without hiring a professional and spending seventy-five thousand more of your money.
Mrs. Ford.
Yes, I was just going to say, Judith Ford, after my experience with the South Harwich Meeting House, we never had a study. And I think, truthfully, I think seventy-five thousand dollars would be a waste at this point with the talent that we have in the town, with the Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the people that are willing to volunteer. We can make tremendous, tremendous success and tremendous progress with this project. It was wanted by the town after many studies before. It's hugely successful. It's missing only one thing, and that's time. It hasn't had a chance to develop, but it's going in the right direction, and it's going there very quickly when you consider what a large building it is. And I think we can commend the town for supporting it and all the people that have worked to make it a success. And I think there is no way that it's not going to be a success. And we just have to give it a little time and support and let it evolve because it's coming. It will be an asset to this town. It has been an asset, and it always will be an asset, which is what all of us fought for for so long. And I'd like to move the question.
I'm sorry, you cannot move the question at the same time that you were speaking. So... Yes, sir.
Gary Conroy, St. Louis. I think Mr. Gunderson's request here is very, very reasonable. I also find it a little interesting that two new people show up on the Finance Committee in the last couple of days, and the six vote yes for Mr. Gunderson's study went to zero. So I don't know how that happened, but it seems a little tricky to me. The other thing I would say is there was some illusion, alluding to that the Finance Committee has been very much in the dark on a lot of what's going on there. But all of a sudden, everybody's kissed and made up, and there'll be no more bickering, and there'll be a full disclosure of everything. I don't buy all that. And that's why I think we need the study. We need a professional, we need to get on it. And the other thing, I think, is that I don't think the town has the expertise in-house to develop a strategy and a plan and study on its own, especially when you look at the number of openings in key areas that would have to contribute to that study. We'll never get it done on our own, and this is a reasonable request. I say vote no on the amendment, and I say vote yes on Article 57. Thank you.
Ms. Dusset from the Finance Committee.
Hi, folks. I'll keep this short. This has been a very interesting discussion tonight, but also over the past several months that I joined the Finance Committee. So the one thing I do want to say is that regardless of who drives or who leads the study, whether it be a third party or internally-driven project, the one thing we've discussed tonight is that this is going to be a relatively long process. We need to hire some people. There's all kinds of stuff to perform, a study on the strategic plan and the business plan for the use of that building, if you will. So it's Cultural Center, it's other things that may be used in that building. So that's going to take some time, and it's going to take involvement from probably many of the department heads, along with all of us up here and many of you. The one thing that we can start now, which has been a thorn in my side as a member of the Finance Committee through this whole process, is that we do not have a capital plan that spans five to eight years on this building. This is despite what it's used for. I mean, right now, we could start that tomorrow. We don't need to wait to hire all these different people. We don't need, we just don't need to do that. We have people in-house, we have the Capital Outlay Committee that Michael just referred to, we have... to, we have a member of the Department of Public Works that I've been told is, this is their mission in life and their job here. We could start this work tomorrow if we choose to. We don't have to wait for all of this other stuff. So that would be my recommendation, because that information is the critical piece of financial information that is going to tell us a story about what's going to take to get this building up to snuff. And I'm saying that's a preliminary study we could do now. We are dependent on the strategic plan and the business plan to finish or to do a final capital plan or to really update that after that. But we could do a very good job of that today and starting today, in my opinion. So that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Sir, before I recognize you, if you're looking to move the question, there doesn't appear to be anybody else ready to speak.
Well, I'll ask to move the question anyway.
Okay. That's a non-debatable motion. It requires a three-fourths vote. All those in favor of the motion to terminate the debate on the amendment to the main motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Okay, it is a vote. So debate has been terminated on the amendment. So the motion in front of you, and I'm going to make a comment just to keep everybody on focus as to what we need to accomplish here tonight. If the amendment passes, regardless of which way the amendment goes, the vote is probably going to be very similar on the main motion. And I don't want to open up another whole series of debate about the main motion all over again. Also, we have one article left. If everybody gets up and leaves, we're going to have a big problem getting a quorum tomorrow night. So please hang around, and let's discuss the herring fisheries as we traditionally do and end the meeting. So with that being said, the motion in front of you is to amend the main motion by reducing the requested funding amount of $75,000 to $0. All those in favor of the amendment, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule that it is, that the amendment passed. So now we're on to the main motion, which does not have a funding feature to it due to the amendment. I'm not going to reread the motion. You're familiar with it. It is not funded, and I'm going to ask that all those in favor of the main motion without funding, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It passes. And we can move on to the last article, Article 58. I knew, Mr. Ford, when I got up this morning, it was going to be like this, just so you know. Appreciate it, Mr. Kroll. As long as Mr. Houston is here, we'll get through Article 58, if he's still awake. He is, good. Article 58, see what action the town will take in regard to the herring fisheries and act fully thereon. Mr. Chori, do you have a main motion?
Yes, Article 58, herring fisheries. I move this article be accepted and adopted.
It's a movement seconded that Article 58 be accepted and adopted. Mr. Houston.
As we usually do, we pause here at the end of the annual meeting to remember Marge Marion and the long tradition of this article wrapping up the annual town meeting. And there's a lot of good things happening regarding the herring, from the local, county, state, and federal contributions. Right now, I believe the electronic count over at the reservoir is about 160,000, and the visual counters further up the river are back in action after a hiatus with the pandemic, and so things are looking good with the herring run. Thank you.
Any further debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of accepting and adopting Article 58, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting.
No.
All those in favor of adjournment, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Meeting's adjourned. Anybody?